All right, so with that, Chair calls the Sunset staff for the State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Watson. Oh, yeah, yeah, there is a monitor in the back that members can watch what's going on and such. I just didn't, the members, the individuals, the public that are watching on the screen, it'll look like there's a vacant bench that people are, you know, if everybody, if too many folks vacate. But we are able to track what's going on in the back. So, very good point, Senator Watson, I appreciate you reminding me. Thank you. So with that, Chair recognizes Sunset staff for the Board of Plumbing Examiners.
Hello Chairman Birdwell, Vice Chairman Patty, members of the Commission. My name is Julie Davis and I'm the project manager for the Sunset review of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. The Board was created in 1947 when the state shifted away from regulating plumbing at the local level to increase the ability of plumbers to work across the state and meet the growing demand for residential construction. In 2018, Sunset staff found a similar need for plumbers spurred by shortage of affordable housing, impediments to hurricane recovery, and increasing home prices for Texans. So our review began by observing the Board's response to Hurricane Harvey and considering the impact of regulation on Texas. Like many small agencies, the Board has to contend with factors outside its control, including budget constraints. And while its staff is dedicated, it is small. Further, the agency statute has myriad of requirements that impede the agency's efficiency. These factors would impact any agency's ability to respond to the needs of licensees in the public. However, Sunset staff identified many problems that were not the result of funding or resource limitations, but resulted from choices by the Board and agency leadership to maintain the status quo or neglect to question it. The Sunset review found that the Board and agency leadership have avoided substantive changes when and where the agency needs it most, particularly changes that would reduce regulation or reform historic practices in the industry. For example, despite a backlog of more than 1,400 applicants who can wait up to eight months to take exams, the Board's exam committee has not met since 2011. Until the Sunset report was published, neither it nor the full Board had recently discussed changes to exam components or administration, instead defending an outdated and unnecessary process. Further, Sunset staff found the Board misplaces its energy on regulations that aren't required or necessary. For example, the Board is overly involved in overseeing continuing education, and it wasn't until this year that the Board began to consider simply allowing online CE courses. As long as the materials, providers, instructors, and courses all met questionably prescriptive requirements. While the needless restrictions on licensees alone indicate serious problems with the agency, poor customer service and performing background checks on only 6 percent of plumbers reflect unacceptable priorities that do not serve the citizens best. Ultimately, that inability to be responsive to the needs of Texans led Sunset staff to conclude that the regulation of plumbing could be more effectively performed by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. TDLR has experienced successfully regulating similar trades like electricians and has proven to be adept at transforming programs to better serve Texans and licensee populations. In Issue Two, Sunset staff recommends completely revising the agency's exams to eliminate practical components and update content, taking advantage of modern technology that would allow the agency to either offer exams remotely itself or partner with a third party to create a more robust and accessible exam for Texans across the state. Sunset staff also recommends replacing the responsible master plumber designation with a plumbing contractor license, which better reflects the role that position plays in businesses and in relationships with consumers. Other recommendations would streamline regulations for entry-level plumbers and clarify appropriate oversight of continuing education. In Issue Three, Sunset staff makes several recommendations to formalize and standardize enforcement processes, largely focusing on statutory barriers to efficient and effective regulation and creating fairer, more transparent processes. All of these recommendations are designed to work regardless of whether the regulation of plumbing transfers. But these recommendations alone will not solve the underlying problems identified in the report without ongoing dedication by any agency to remain efficient and responsive to the public. That concludes my testimony today, but I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Members, any questions for Ms. Davis? Representative Thompson.
I heard some policy statements and I thought we were out of policies. Is that in the preview of us making recommendations on policy issues?
It's not out of purview, it just really depends on what the policy question is. So I'm more than happy to have the discussion. It generally revolves around what new issues we might bring up when it comes time to actually do our votes in January. But I'm always happy to have you on the floor speaking whatever you wish to speak, Representative.
Well, I appreciate the presentation and it was excellent.
Thank you.
But I was listening to some of the things, particularly about the examination. And I've heard some legislation relative to the plumbers. And I know the plumbers are being examined over information that does not fall within the pure view of the jurisdiction of their work. And that is a policy issue we've been trying to change, and I'm just wondering, even if we transferred to TDLR, how does TDLR correct a policy issue like that?
I agree. Let's have that discussion during the new issues. Because, I mean, it's similar to what we heard last, last board meeting on the Realtors. My team's already developing a standalone bill.
Sure.
Simply because of my, SDSI as an entity is not under review. Now, we've had, as a policy question, we've had agencies with SDSI come before us, two of them, this interim. So I'm trying to adhere to my own rules.
Yes.
In the sense of making sure that we're not adding, if I may use the holiday spirit, we're not adding too many ornaments to the Christmas tree.
Sure.
A sunset. But I'm always happy to have that discussion, because there's been some that, like Senator Watson had, that Chair Finance, Chair Finance Senator Nelson said was appropriate, and others that he thought, well, that really belonged to the Finance Committee and Appropriations Committee. So it really, it depends, I guess, is the question. We hear TABC tomorrow, and I've had a bill three sessions in a row trying to fix the, that you've been helpful on, the consequenti-.
Yeah.
With TABC.
Yes.
So I know exactly what you're describing, so.
And I was listening, I was listening to her testimony, which was so excellently presented. And she made a statement about continuing education. And I think that's critical, because there are a lot of veterans who have not had the training and the experience that we are allowing to go into areas such as plumbing and other areas. And without continuing education, I think that they're going to be behind, and a lot of work that they would be performing would probably be ineffective, and the consumer, the public, is who we are supposed to be protecting are going to be unprotected.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Members, any other questions for Sunset staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis, I appreciate it. Thank you. Chair calls the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiner staff. There are four individuals that I'll call forward, and then there are six resource witnesses members. So let me, let me list out those, and call the individuals to testify, and then list out those that are here for resource. Julio Serta, Chairman. Julio, am I saying your last name correctly? Did I say Serta correctly? Lisa Hill, Executive Director of the Board of Plumbing Examiners. Robert Jallnose, am I saying that correctly, Robert? Okay, Board member. And then Brian Francis, Executive Director, Department of Licensing and Regulation from TDLR. I also have six individuals for resource witnesses. Ben Friedman, Board Member of Plumbing Examining Board. Jerry Lee, Staff Attorney. Richard Herman, Staff Services Officer. Ian Berry, Staff Attorney. Stephen Davis, Director of Enforcement. And Robert Fraley, Examiner for the Plumbing Examiners. Members, you will notice that I have, of the four individuals that are before us, one, Mr. Francis, is from TDLR. In the event that there are questions, so I don't expect to call on you for testimony as it relates to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In a, what I'm saying is, I expect, I expect active participation from the Plumbing Examiners to testify to us, but I expect your presence here to be passive in the sense of being receptive to questions.
Yes, sir.
Of TDLR from Sunset. So, but I also want the Sunset Commissioners to, or members of Sunset to recognize the unique position Mr. Francis is in, but his presence here, I think, is central to the discussion to be had. So with that, Chair recognizes first, Mr. Serta, as the Chair of the State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Thank you, Mr. Serta, you're recognized.
Good morning and afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Commission, Sunset Commission. My name is Julio Sertan. I am honored to serve as a public member and Board Chair for the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Our Board has sought to provide guidance to the staff and focus this agency's efforts on its mission, which is to protect the health and safety and welfare of the public. The Board is comprised of a responsible master plumber, a master plumber, journeyman plumber, commercial builder, residential builder, two professional engineers, one veteran who is an active reservist. That's the composition of the Board right now. While myself and the Board take responsibility for the shortcomings of the agency, I respectfully disagree with the Sunset staff assertions that we, as a Board, have, have been inattentive and unwilling to address perceived deficiencies in the agency's operations. A primary component of our oversight is, of course, through legislative appropriations requests. One recurring theme that we ask this Commission is to consider today is the lack of staff that this Board has in relation to its responsibilities. I have seen our requests for additional resources denied time after time, and statewide budget cuts have actually resulted in reduction in staff levels to the agency's current full-time employees of 31. No one disputes that the examination backlog exists, and that we all agree wait times must drastically be reduced. I have personally sat in board meetings after board meetings where we discuss our critical shortage of resources and lament the fact that we lack sufficient appropriations and FTE counts to measure up to the task. Yet we continue to work with less. We have worked biennium after biennium with what has been improved by appropriations, of course. Meanwhile, the Sunset staff report at Issue One, Page 17, suggests that the Board's $2.6 million in revenue collected above appropriated expenditures could be allocated to TDLR to implement and propose changes. This is deeply disappointing, considering that the Board has watched that revenue be distributed year after year to the State General Fund, knowing that the agency desperately could use those monies to shore up its operations. Board staff is disciplined and efficient, and what they do and provide the best customer service to its licensees and the public that their current resources allow. Staff creatively cross-trains individuals to fulfill its mission and relies on staff members to split duties in order to achieve what it does. While Sunset staff may take issue with how some of our appropriation requests were structured, including on behalf of what the department position was requested, given the hybrid nature of many personnel, virtually any addition to staff caused ripple effects, improving all departments and lifting all boats. This dynamic informed the Board's decision when making its LARs. Everyone knows that the old adage that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. The Board continually altered its strategy in appropriations, hoping some of those attempts would be successful and would improve operations, regardless of the position and regardless of the department to which it was assigned to. Another key function of the Board's oversight is at the agency's financial affairs. Financially, the Plumbing Board has been and continues to be in good shape of both its appropriated funds and the substantial revenue it collects on behalf of the state. The Board has provided guidance concerning the fiscal operations of the Plumbing Board and the agency has had no negative findings from the State Auditor's Office or as a result of periodic independent financial audits performed by a professional third party to ensure integrity, most recently done in July 2018. This is particularly admirable, given that the $5 million in revenues processed by the Board utilizing a single full-time accountant, and the fact that the Board recently requested and was denied an additional accountant with which to segregate critical financial duties, some of which currently fall under the Executive Director's Administrative Assistant to perform. Our Board agrees that the TSBP can improve, and as upcoming testimony will indicate, we also agree with certain recommendations provided by the Sunset Commission staff. Board staff is currently working to implement some of the suggested changes and welcomes input in improving operations. As with any organization, improvement can always be made. However, the Board disagrees with the conclusion that the Plumbing Board should be merged with the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. I would caution against opting for such an extreme and inconsequential measure, particularly when the Board has not been given a meaningful opportunity to promote reforms and implement recommendations to be determined by the Commission, hopefully with additional appropriations to go along with it. Members, I would also like to touch on Sunset staff's recommendation to eliminate the practical examination. If practical examinations are eliminated, the effects could include dangers lurking in the hospital operating rooms, healthcare clinics, schools, and homes. The Plumbing Board written response to the Sunset staff report refers to the health risk, and Ms. Hill, Executive Director of the TSBP, will provide testimony after Mr. Jallnose on this issue and other major concerns the Board staff has. I respectfully request that this Commission not just follow a cookie-cutter approach by blindly following what other states might happen to be doing, but rather consider the unique harms posed by poor plumbing and how our current examination processes guard against such harm. With respect to the examination, Sunset staff essentially takes the position that we are too protective of the public and that a written examination is sufficient to protect against the harm. However, you should carefully consider the current examination rates and statistics cited by the Board staff in their written response, which I believe demonstrates that the need for a practical examination is unfortunately still required for the public's protection. Other states may do differently, but that doesn't mean that they do it right. There are always benefits and trade-offs with any public policy. But I would suggest to you that the costs to the public of imposing a practical examination on the front end are well worth it. The added protection afforded the public in ensuring that the licensed individuals who do not have a firm grasp on the design and function of the plumbing system are prevented from performing poor work and burdening consumers with substantial costs on the back end. Elimination of the practical exam would shift these costs to the public to deal with it, and would do so in an uneven fashion, as only those consumers who are unfortunate enough to select an insufficiently trained or examined plumber will be affected and suffer the consequences. Members, I am a professional civil engineer in this great state of Texas. I am not a plumber. But through my interaction with the plumbing industry while serving on the Board and in my field, I can attest that the majority of the plumbing professionals desire to do good work and provide plumbing services that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. A strong majority of the plumbers I have heard from concerning Sunset have indicated their preference for the State Board of Plumbing Examiners continuing to protect Texans and their plumbing system by remaining standalone agents. I respectfully request that this Commission consider the Plumbing Board not strictly on the basis of what we have done, which I would assert have hampered by a critical lack of resources, but on what we, as an agency, could do with appropriate resources scaled to a task at hand. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to move to, because Board members outrank the Executive Director. No disrespect to the Executive Director, but that's why the Board members are here. I'm going to move to Mr. Jallnose to recognize you, and then I'll come to you, Madam Executive Director. Mr. Jallnose, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Birdwell, Vice Chairman Patty, and members of the Sunset Advisory Commission. My name is Robert Jallnose, and this is my second stint on the Plumbing Board. First appointed by Governor Perry and again by Governor Abbott, representing the plumbing contractor position on the Board. I have been a licensed master plumber since 1977 and am the responsible master plumber for Steve's Plumbing Company in San Antonio for the last 40-plus years. I feel I have the experience and knowledge necessary to our industry to be considered an expert in respect to plumbing, state license laws, codes, and how to run a successful plumbing business efficiently. The Plumbing Board is very hands-on, offering guidance and direction to staff based on the individual expertise that each of our Board members bring to the table. We take our appointment very seriously and are very proud of the skeleton staff we have running the agency. It's too bad that the agency has been short-staffed for so long and denied additional funding each and every year, especially when we contribute $2.6 million to the General Fund of Texas every year. Wearing my plumbing contractor's hat, and with all due respect, makes me think that the Sunset Commission is determined to merge our agency with TDLR. I reviewed other agency reports from the Sunset Commission and was able to find very similar comments on those agencies, with the only difference being that the Commission allowed them to make the necessary changes to comply with their findings and then granted them extensions of up to 15 years. An example of nitpicking, which Ms. Davis brought up earlier, has to do with the designation of an RMP to a plumbing contractor. I start with this because it's not of any value to the protection of our citizens. It's just semantics. Not all plumbing contractors in Texas are licensed plumbers. They are business owners concerned mainly with their bottom line. If you own a plumbing company and do not hold a plumbing license, plumbing license law requires you to employ an RMP, Responsible Master Plumber, to be responsible for all plumbing work performed by the company. Who is better suited to be responsible for the health and safety of the citizens of the state of Texas than a licensed master plumber slash RMP? A plumbing contractor designation instead of an RMP designation is just plain dumb and doesn't protect our health and safety. Someone has to be ultimately responsible for the workmanship of their plumbers. Having the Plumbing Board gives me reassurance that the individual licensed plumbers I hire are qualified to perform sanitary code-compliant plumbing work that will pass inspection and not put our citizens in a health and safety issue. The examination is not an easy, easy exam, so when a candidate passes, we at least know that they have the basic knowledge needed to protect our citizens. The State Plumbing Board also performs checks on criminal history of any known felons applying for examinations. It's on our applications. Do you have a previous felony? Yes or no? If yes, please explain why. It's reassuring to know that I'm not sending a known sex offender or thief into a citizen's home to perform plumbing work carte blanche. Because as a plumber, on the service side, you go in people's houses all the time. And, you know, they let, open the door and let you ride in, because they've got a plumbing problem and they'd like to get that addressed. But it's good to know that there are checks being done to make sure that the people that are in our workforce that are licensed are, you know, not felons, non-felons. So with a plumbing contractor designation, there would not be the safeguards in place that we have now with the RMP designation. As soon as I saw this, I knew the Sunset Commission was determined to dissolve the TSBP at whatever the cost was to the citizens of Texas. It certainly was putting Texans in harm's way over some meaningless wording that doesn't address the real issues here. I don't think they can sell that idea to anyone who cares about proper sanitary plumbing and clean water. Imagine plumbing with no rules or codes. You wouldn't need to imagine it, because none of us would be here. We do, you know, we are the front line for protecting our drinking water, for maintaining sewage from just flowing out in the streets or down the walls or whatever, and going to proper sewage treatment plants. It's been proven fact over history that disease spreads fast through improper plumbing installations. With the pro, with the proposed Sunset recommendation, I'm left with a lot of questions. Where, and I'm glad that Mr. Francis is here from TDLR. Nice to meet you. Here's some of my questions. Where will the examination expertise come from? They want to do just a written exam and not a practical exam. Could you imagine sending someone into your house and he's passed a written exam, and now he's going to, he's going to solder up a bunch of copper plumbing water lines in your house? You don't know if he knows how to do that properly. There's a 10-step process to do a proper solder joint. And so if he doesn't know that 10-step process, and he doesn't know correctly, you're going to come home one day and your house is going to be flooded, because it wasn't a proper joint that was made. How many people will it take to get this done by TDLR? What will the expense be? How do you know it will be less money than what we currently are spending now? Where will they get the funds to do this? Will the testing be as effective from an outside agency as our in-house agency staffed with plumbing industry experts? What will be the cost to do this? Will we be turning out professional plumbers as we are now? Who will be monitoring the testing criteria from the third-party examiners to see if it meets the health and safety requirements for our citizens? What will the cost to monitor this criteria be? How many employees will it take to perform this task? The Plumbing Board Examination Center and Examination Committee utilize professional plumbers to review and continually modify the examination criteria to help ensure our licensees are qualified to be licensed plumbers in Texas. With the limited staff at the Plumbing Board and the large amount of revenue generated for the General Fund, it would be hard match for TD, it would be hard match for TDLR to perform the same services under the same budget. The Plumbing Board runs very efficiently, even with the shortage of staff that would be nice to have. Having that staff would answer or even remove concerns from the Sunset Commission's findings. With more staff, we could run more efficiently and generate more fines and protect our industry. A history of the last five years of staff requests show that most of those requests were turned down. Sunset adds that they could give TDLR our $2.6 million revenue profit to help them facilitate their operation. Right now, all that revenue goes to the State General Fund. It's pretty brazen to make this type of recommendation. We have repeatedly asked for a portion of that revenue to stay with the Texas Plumbing Board. If we received as little as $500,000 of that money, leaving $2.1 million still for the General Revenue Fund, major improvements and shortfalls of the agency could be achieved. More staff, more examiners, more field agents could be covered with the additional money. Many of the suggestions from the Sunset Commission are dead-on. But this has, but most of the suggestions are due to the lack of funds to the Plumbing Board. This has held the Plumbing Board back from accomplishing its goals. I was taken aback that they recommended to take the money out of the General Fund and give it directly to TDLR. Why didn't they recommend giving it to the Texas Plumbing Board? I would have preferred to hear that. Sunset Commission thinks that TDLR will use less funding to achieve more services, not what they can do with the additional $2.6 million. Not to hear how if we give TDLR more money, that they can address the shortfalls presented by Sunset. That's just unfair and a very biased statement. Lisa Hill and staff have been wearing many hats due to understaffing of the agency. Most fines are generated to citizens that are not licensed within the state to perform plumbing work and are caught in the field performing licensed plumbers' work. I know this has always scared the hell out of me, especially when we hear about the gas line explosions or the cross-water connections made that contaminate our water and injure our citizens. Protection of our drinking water, gas systems, sanitary plumbing, medical gas, water quality, and fire sprinkler systems for residential use are of the utmost importance in protecting our health and safety. The infectious disease element that licensed plumbers protect our citizens from is a paramount task that can only be monitored by focused experts in the field. I know I wouldn't trust a doctor, dentist, or even a veterinarian, who wasn't continually monitored by a specific agency dedicated to protecting that specific field and mandating continuing education to keep their individual licenses up to date. A blanket agency's for a lot of services, works for a lot of services, but not for plumbers, doctors, or dentists. The state licensed plumbing inspectors all come out of Plumbing Board Examination Center. Who will monitor our inspectors, and what will the cost to monitoring our inspectors be to TDLR? We have to have qualified plumbing inspectors in the field to ensure our citizens' safeties. Cities- Cities pay inspector salaries, but the Plumbing Board guarantees they do the job correctly and have the knowledge to inspect all plumbing. TDLR cannot specifically address the large number of plumbing licenses and the demand and issues that come along with their license. There are, on average, over 689 walk-ins per month through our doors today. And we get, we serve each and every one of them and get their requests answered, whether it's in person, through kiosks, and other progressive measures that we have taken. Can you just walk into TDLR and get this same service? You can't. There are, there are 85,000-plus plumbing licensees. The TDLR was meeting this last Monday on the 10th at a meeting scheduled for 8:30, and it canceled that meeting at 8:46 for a lack of quorum. In our history, we've never canceled a meeting for having a lack of quorum. Everybody's very, very, very involved and knows the importance of, you know, valid plumbing license laws. Can TDLR handle these license renewals in the same effective manner that it's being handled currently? There are 7,300 plumbing companies in the state that the Board monitors. What additional staff requirements and costs to TDLR will be required to do this? Will it be less expensive than our current system that is currently working fine and renewing our licensees annually, also adding additional funds to the state revenue system? Field inspectors and examiners in general were licensed plumbers before they became field inspectors or examiners. They are essential to protecting our medical gas systems in hospitals, our drinking water, our sanitary plumbing, and our gas systems. Who will be qualified to do this at TDLR and at what cost without a Board that is specifically engaged in the protection of our health and safety? Who will be qualified to determine the criteria and practical knowledge required to protect our citizens' health and safety? In other states, there are many wrongful deaths caused by state, states and agencies that do not have a specific licensing board. A lot of the Sunset Commission issues don't address or help the current situation in Texas. They only show deficiencies and don't show fixes, except to give TDLR more money to get the job done. If the State Plumbing Board were given 100% of the requested FTEs every year that it, that it requests, it would be interesting to see how much the efficiency level of the agency rises and the amount of additional revenue to the State General Fund rises. Since 2004, the FTEs requested versus what we received were cut each and every year. In 2018, it went as far as they cut two currently-employed FTEs, which limited our staff even more. We have continued to be short in, in the field agents, which not only protect our health and safety, but are real revenue gener, generators when noncompliance is found. You've got to have field agents out there because there's always someone trying to get by with something, and if you don't have basically a policing environment to make sure they're keeping our industry straight, you're going to see those accidents and those bad situations happen with cross-connections and gas leaks and explosions and other things. Examination statistics show a 28.76 across-the-board fail rate for all examinations given. Digging deeper, the group that falls, that fails the most are the tradesmen plumbers' examinees. Fail rate is at a 41.26% among tradesmen and examinees, according to our 2016-17 statistics. The tradesman license was, was created for our industry to increase the number of licensed plumbers to help offset the shortage of licensees with the home-building boom that was going on in our state. The tradesman is only allowed to work on residential plumbing only. This has been very effective in increasing the licensed workforce needed to keep up with home-building demands. The fact that the pass rate is low also shows that we still hold these individuals to a standard that ensures they have the knowledge and ability to protect health and safety and properly understand how to install plumbing. I've read the current Sunset Commission report and respectfully disagree with their findings. I believe abolishing the State Plumbing Board would be a huge mistake and detrimental to the health and safety of the citizens of Texas. We don't want to be like other states. We're Texas. They want to be like us. Even if I weren't on the Board, I would have the same fears by not having the specific agencies like the doctors and dentists do to protect our best interest and the interest of my fellow Texans. Have you ever visited a foreign country or another state or whatever, and all of a sudden you come back and you've got a case of jardia or cryptosporidium or some other stomach ailment? That's because of poor plumbing. It's a proven fact that's from poor plumbing. We don't have that here. In Austin, in the Capitol, you can drink all the water you want and you're going to be just fine. So I can't again stress the health and safety issue that's, that's at hand here. And please think this carefully, think this over carefully, and get all the facts before making your decision. I thank the committee for allowing me the time to state my concerns. Happy holidays, happy new year, and I'm ready to answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Hill, you are recognized. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chairman Birdwell.
Would you pull the microphone to you? There you go.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Birdwell, Vice Chair Patty, members. I don't think there's any seat any warmer than the one I'm in right now here, so I'll just go ahead and proceed. And I do want to say I, this is one of the best boards that we've had in quite some time. The board members are very active, very passionate, as you can see, and we have a lot of regular discussions and good board meetings. And we all want to move forward and work out the things that Sunset has brought out. Sunset staff did a wonderful job in, in bringing some of the items to our attention that can be fixed. There's many items that can easily be, or further fixed. There's many items that we've been in the process of correcting for quite some time. It's a very slow process. Part of that is due to staff. I want to say right up front that we regularly visit with TDLR in particular. Saw Brian not too long ago. They do a wonderful job. I go out and look at their strategic plans. I go out and look at a lot of their information to see what I can glean that might be worth using. We do it with a lot of agencies. We work with the Railroad Commission on a regular basis, TCEQ, their enforcement departments, and the like. I do want to say that right up front, we, the big elephant in the room is the examination backlog, and I'll address that right up front. We, you know, we've gone so far as to schedule examinations on Saturdays. We have doubled up where we could on our examination. We are currently looking at outsourcing quite a few. We are, we, we took a big map and actually went and put dots all around the state to see where the highest concentration of the individuals that are currently scheduled are right now. And there's 1,500 of them, I'll tell you that, it's no secret. Is it a backlog? You could call it a backlog. Is it an extremely high demand? Absolutely. We're doing the most that we can do with what we have right now. It's, it's not because of the lack of want-to, it's a lack of staff and, and absolutely ability. Right now, I currently have, have the examiners working on some Saturdays where we've scheduled some recently. As you may well know, those examiners don't get overtime, they get comp time. If one examiner falls out, I pull a field investigator in to do the, that job. Every now and then, I have to let them take off. They just won't, you know, you keep beating them, but they just won't keep going for forever. And they'd like to take a day off here and there at Christmas. I, I do want to mention that we took liberty of going ahead and creating what we call an implementation plan and putting it in the back of our response. It's got some ideas, and certainly we're prepared to offer up more ideas as we go along. It's, it's clearly as if we're in a state of triage. And, I mean, we're a big old oak tree here. We've been here a really long time, but your, our limbs are starting to get a little weak here and there, and, and you can put some stuff on us and tie us up, but we need some help. As far as our poor customer service that was brought up, you know, it's all falls back to me, I'm not looking to make excuses, but we, we created one of those perfect storms in that we took all of our, all of our renewals, which is a larger number of renewal applicants than we've ever had, and we started moving them towards online usage. Well, in order to assist those people, we took a dedicated person and put them on the phone and said, "Help everybody you can." Well, one person's not enough whenever you have 72,000 people that you need to help. And we don't have near as nice a phone system as Mr. Francis does, but we have, we've been working towards getting our new telephone system. And our new telephone system will allow us better to track calls that are dropped, calls that are picked up, the number of calls. There's just so many things in place right now. And in addition to the telephone system, one of the things that we determined in working with DIR is that our bandwidth is, there's only so much they can give us. So what we looked at and spoke with DIR and several providers was being able to bring fiber up to the building, because in addition to our telephone system, our, our voice-over-internet, to clarify that, we're also going to be utilizing a web-based program, CAPS, and we're working on training to get onto that. So we've got all this coming at us at the same time, and it's not something that I take or staff takes lightly. We're, we're constantly looking down the road, and I had to look down that road and say, "Boy, I've got a whole lot of stuff that's going to have to be done here, and how am I going to get there?" And so we're there, it's just a, it's a slower process. But we certainly have a staff that's dedicated to assisting individuals. I think you could ask any staff member, and sometimes they're probably, if you can, be overly helpful. You know, sometimes people like to have conversations about things other than plumbing, so. But we want to get to each and every one of them. We worked very hard in doing our transition to the, to the online renewal. We built two kiosks in our front lobby. You can walk in there and do it. You can call us on the phone, we'll help you register. We've worked very closely with the Health Professions Council, which oversees the six other agency groups that utilizes the Versta regulatory database. And they were, HPC works very hard as well. They have a limited staff. However, they help us as well when they can with our, with our customer service as far as reaching, setting a password and that sort of thing. We've done everything we can do. Our renewal system actually is set up, it, it was changed several years ago because all of our individuals used to renew at one time, and it, and it was put into a staggered process, so you have renewals going out every single month. The only month that we don't have renewals going out are in December, thank God, right now. And we're coming full circle on that. We started in, in December of last year, so we're full circle on that. And, but it did, it, it's almost that storm that came at us at the same time we're trying to answer questions and tell people what we're doing. It's not, it's not a lack of want-to. And in regards to the Health Professions Council, I refer to them as HPC several times throughout this. Those individuals, they more or less provide us with information on how to use their system. We have one, for lack of a better term, super user, and that super user in our office happens to be also the executive assistant. She wears a lot of hats, in addition to a little accounting. And so I have some, some concerns when Sunset brought up the fact that we have weak data practices. We have a lot of data, but some of it we have to ask HPC to provide to us. I, I can bring you stacks and stacks of correspondence between HPC and I and our other staff and where we work with them. Is there data that I can't just go out and reach and get my hands and put on it? Yes, I have to get it through HPC. We utilize it to do our, our examination reports to the Board. I can tell you who and what and where and when is scheduled for an examination. We look at the number of renewals, the errors, everything that we need to look at on a daily basis. I just don't have enough people to look at every single report every single day. As far as, you know, there was, there's been discussion here, everybody's discussed it too. I'm going to go ahead and go right into that. We have licensed investigators, or licensed plumbers that are also investigators. Those investigators perform compliance checks. It's one of our, it's one of our performance measures. But in doing those compliance checks, they're also performing complaint investigations. They're, they may well go to a program and present information on careers or to a home builders group or whomever asks us. They, they wear a lot of hats as well. But those individuals are licensed plumbers, and when they're out checking job sites, more times than not, if there's a problem, that problem is addressed right then and there before it even can become a complaint because that individual, that employee is a licensed plumber. They can see what's going on. So to do away with individuals that might be licensed for our examination or to perform our field investigations, that's something I feel very strongly about. And fingerprints and criminal background reviews, those are things that we take, those are some of the most important things that we do as far as criminal backgrounds go. Our database, we've been matching it with DPS's sex offender database for years. It's not something new. We take that very seriously. Plumbers go right into people's homes. They go into the most private portions of your homes. My name's on the back of the card. I, I take it very seriously. Have we looked at different programs? Yes. Can we do a better job and do more research and more background checks? Absolutely. With some authority that's came to be in the last few years, and, and part of that, Ms. Davis was instrumental in bringing out, which is a rat-back program. We can utilize some of that. It's rather expensive for us. However, what we're, our, one of our implementations to solve some of these problems that they've brought up is to go ahead and just do the fingerprint situation, if everyone so desires. Antiquated examinations, it doesn't create unnecessary burdens for licensees, it doesn't reduce the, it doesn't, it doesn't create a shortage of plumbers. There's a shortage of plumbers, there's a shortage of electricians, there's a shortage of everybody. And we, we almost have to say hooray for that for our state because we are busy. And on any given day, I can tell you, there's probably two, three, four people that call and say, "I want to come to Texas because there's work to do, and I have a license in another state, what can I do?" Well, you betcha we can get you in here. If you have a license in another state, we can utilize that time. We can look at the service that you put forth, how does it match ours? During the storm, that, that came up regularly. We were able to work with people, get people here. We made a response. I put it out on the website. It, it's, there's so much more that we can do, but we can only do it and take it so far with people that I have. It's very difficult to prepare and present to you a succession plan for which Sunset would like for me to have done, when I don't have the staff to do it. But our natural progression within the agency in a lot of cases, I was Director of Enforcement, so of course I had the wants and desires, I'm questioning those right at the moment, but to get to the Executive Director position. We have an extremely well-versed Director of Enforcement. I'm sure that I can talk him into it. Hopefully, he progresses up into here, I don't know. We have investigators that have moved to different positions, but to write a formal succession... But to write a formal succession plan, no. I don't have one written on a piece of paper that says this person's gonna get trained to go to here. I asked for a Deputy Director and was denied that. And so I'm gonna go at it again this time in my legislative appropriation request. And I'm gonna ask for just a Director-type position. I'm gonna take some of the bells and whistles off of it and see if it goes through. If you don't get something one way, you go at it another way, until you get what you need. Something, back to the exam, just as a note. And in talking about individuals from other states, we, this week, we had an individual, and I won't bring up the state. One came from one side of the country and one came from the other side of the country. But in each case, those individuals said, "We are super plumbers in our state." And we said, "Well, come on in here and take this exam. We're ready for you." Neither one of them walked out without a license. It's not that we were trying to prevent them. They were not familiar with the codes that they should've been familiar with and the proper application of it, nor in a rough end in the practical portion or even in the written or the drawings. And I will tell you, on one portion of the examination, the individual that made a zero in that portion of his examination, that particular state happens to have a pretty lengthy and scary news story out there right now. Do you get on the news when you have a catastrophe? Absolutely. Do you see the little ones? No, sir. We don't wanna be in any of them. Continuing education, I wanna touch on that just a little bit. Continuing education's been in place since 1992. I think if you were to ask around and look around, there's some other agencies that actually took our model for continuing education, modified it a little bit, and have used it in different license types. We've made some changes in continuing education. And we certainly are not opposed to making some other changes. And in addition, I have looked very carefully at some of the ways that TDLR does their continuing education. Some things are similar, some things are not. We certainly don't want to lessen any of the education. But one of the most recent things we've done to help the plumbers renew their licenses quicker and be able to obtain continuing education is to allow individuals located across the state to take correspondence courses. Previously, that was a restrictive item that was in our rules. That's been removed. Our board said, "No more. Open it up. Let's make it easier for them to do this." That's what we did. They're in the progress, process right now of moving that same correspondence towards an online application. I'm gonna touch base just a bit on one item that a lot of people have different feelings about, which is, it was in Issue Two in the staff report. And it's the renewal of licenses. We don't have a, it uses the word, our approach is non-standard. It's not so much that it's non-standard, it's in our statute that they'll renew every year. So if there's gonna be any changes in it, of course, that's one of them that would need to occur. However, I believe most of the licenses, and many of, many of, with Mr. Francis, are a two-year renewal. Dental recently went to a two-year renewal, and they use the system that we use. And so we visited with HPC about that. And we've spelled out a way that might work even better and do a three-year renewal. And that's part of our implementation plan. Overall inefficiencies. I can't do anything but go back to full staff and how great it might be. However, I do wanna address something else that was spelled out within Issue Three on staff's comments. Recently, we, well, last session, we made a change in our, we were able to obtain a change in statute, which allowed us to do default summary schedule. It's like a default order on an imposed penalty. Rather than burdening SOA with constant, constant, constant cases, we're able to do a default-type process, which slows go before our board, rather than going to SOA. It speeds the process for the public, the plumber, for everybody. So we got that done. Do we still need to make an additional matrix that addresses this new process? Yes. We don't have that new matrix done yet. We'll be happy to do so. In some cases, it's hard to say. If you had two bad apples here, then you need to be penalized with, you know, making fruit salad. It's just, we've gotta work all that out. It's gonna be a new process. The matrix that we had in place initially, which followed the progression of our, of the penalties that were put in place by Sunset in 2002, which we implemented in '04, it worked a little differently. So yes, there's work on those. No problem. Excuse me. In trying to wrap this whole thing up and hope I hit on all the high points, I think we have, can we do better? Absolutely. Does anyone have questions of me? Because I'm sure willing to take them.
I'll get to that in a moment, ma'am. So are you?
Yes, sir. That concludes what I have to say.
Has the caboose on your train of thought come through the railroad intersection?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right.
I'm so done.
All right. Good deal. Members, what I'd like to do is open up questioning to members. Unless Mr. Francis has a, I don't wanna offer you a rebuttal, but if there's an area of clarification from your agency's perspective based upon the testimony of Mr. Serta, Mr. Jolnos, or Ms. Hill, I wanna afford you that, but primarily, I see you as a passive receiver of questions.
I'm gonna stay in that seat.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure. But I, so, all right. With that, we're gonna open the floor to questions. Representative Flynn, followed by Senator Hall.
It's very disappointing that it seems like your testimony is more against TDLR than it is addressing a failed agency that has been that way for some time. I think that probably the Sunset review has pointed out, number one, problems with any agency starts at the head and the board. And I think we have had a failed Executive Director and we have a failed Board. And to criticize or be concerned about what's gonna happen if it goes to TD, I'm not the biggest proponent of TDLR myself. But on the other hand, they do an effective job on those issues that they're working with. And I think this agency kinda needs to stop and start over with new management, new Board. You've had opportunity after opportunity to correct your issues. And you wanna continue to put out a lot of excuses. But the bottom line is, you haven't addressed the issues that last time you were under Sunset review. They haven't been corrected. And they're some of the very same things that were criticized at that point. And they're criticized in this report. I think that it would be in the best interest of the state of Texas to have new management and a new Board.
That's more of a statement, Mr. Chairman.
Your light was on first.
That's right. It's a little frustrating. We listen to a lot of agencies. And when one comes up here and doesn't even recognize that they've got all the problems that they have, that's frustrating. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Representative Flynn. Appreciate it. Senator Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a combination of statements and questions. One specific question I'd like to ask first is, what is the percentage of applicants that you conduct a in-depth criminal background check on?
Based on the information that we provided to Sunset, Sunset believes it's about 6%. However, our entire database matches for sex offenders, but not for all felony convictions. There is a, the individuals are required to be forthcoming, certainly not to say that everyone tells the truth, because we address those as well.
Is that 6% of all, or 6% of those who self-identify and say, "Hey, I did something bad"?
Those are, those are 6% of everything. Based on the data logs that we developed and the discussion that I had with Sunset, that's what they believe it is. But I don't believe that thoroughly, we looked at, how do you come up with this figure? And unless we totally match every single thing that we have and say, "Hey, we're doing 100%." No, we're not. But do you have a lot of people that self-report? Yes. And so we're not including those self-reporting people.
Okay. Thank you. 6%.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Representative Flynn, is he still here? He can make the phone call with Greenville Herald banner to, oh, he is, to record this while we once again agree on an issue here. Because I agree with what he had to say. Because it concerns me, what we're really trying to protect here. Because the bottom line is, we in government are supposed to, while we're supposed to be protecting people, we're supposed to be, the citizens are supposed to be serving them also. And as I listened and read the report and studied it and listened to the testimony, it feels that what we have is a lot of self-inflicted unnecessary burdens that are being put on, that cause us not to be able to do some of the things we need to do. When you take a look at some of the requirements, the stringent requirements, where you have a requirement for 4,000 hours to get a drain cleaner license. Then you go over and you get an additional, with tradesman plumber accumulated 4,000 hours experience and an additional 4,000 hours for a journeyman's license, an additional four years' experience is required to become a master plumber. You realize that we have people with a fraction of that time that are out flying our most sophisticated military aircraft. And we have people with a fraction of that time flying commercial airliners, carrying 300 or 400 people that they have to protect. Is that, is that something we really feel necessary? And then on top of it, when we look at, there are only 11 states out there, as I see, that actually require the practical exam that seems to be at the heart of, part of what we're doing. And then we end up with a backlog of about eight months to be able to take an exam as, because of the things we seem to be doing to ourselves here. So that's why I think I agree. And then your question I have, though, about all the protection, we're talking about where we say that the statute prohibits any person from contracting for plumbing without first securing the services of a responsible master plumber. So a company can hire a responsible master plumber. Is there any requirement that that person ever actually visit any site that he's responsible for?
Absolutely.
So every site or randomly?
Randomly, but you're totally responsible for every site?
No, no, no. I didn't say responsible.
Okay, all right.
Actually, visit the site. Because we put a lot of emphasis on practical application here. Is there any requirement that they, that they actually visit every site they're responsible for?
Some of that's not necessary, like on service calls and things like that. When it comes to the construction side, new construction, commercial residential and things like that, yes, the RMP usually goes and oversees, oversees what's going on.
But that's his choice. It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement. But, you know, but the problem comes in is that when there is a problem, he's ultimately responsible. So that kinda makes it a requirement to get, to do this.
One other question is, if the agency were to continue, what is your plan for bringing tech, bringing the agency into the 21st century with technology? What would you, to be able to fix the problems you have in the backlog and the tremendous amount of time that's spent just trying to get into the business? Because a shortage of plumbers out there really affects the customers. Because causing a shortage of plumbers reduces competition. And reduced competition increased cost to the folks.
Yes, sir.
And so I would think that you'd be working real hard with technology to minimize that.
We've used technology to allow an individual to quickly obtain a plumber's apprentice registration. So that you can take an individual, get them registered, get them out on the job site. As far as technology use on the examination, absolutely. It's going there. It has to. With the kinda demand that's on us right now, it needs to get there. Do I wish I'd've gotten it there faster? Yes, sir. Currently, right now, we have individuals mapped out in certain locations around the state. And we're working with TSTC and several of the other associations to utilize their facilities to do some large groups of the written examination, to get that backlog down. So that as we move forward and cross our fingers, get a couple of more examiners, that we can utilize the third-party services for certain types of exams. We have the want-to.
What do you think would be a reasonable time to wait to take an exam? Is it eight months?
No, it's not reasonable. No, sir.
What would be a reasonable time and what would be your plan to get there?
Historically speaking, it's been about three months. As far as the processing of the application to get you in line to take the exam, that happens very quick. There, again, we use technology for the online application. We allow you to submit online the documents that you need to show your experience and that sort of thing. Those things are in place. Given the examination, all online, and/or moving the practical portions around throughout the state, that can be developed. It's in development, in discussion. Eight months is too long. Yes, sir. I completely agree. I take that responsibility.
It takes about, it takes about a week to get a practical exam to get a, your pilot's license. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator Hall. Ms. Pataki.
Yes, I actually have a question for Mr. Francis. So you didn't quite get out of here, but I'm interested in it. It says in the staff report that you already at TDLR regulate some plumbers that have dual certification with other construction-type trades. So I was wondering, from your perspective, how that differs in your regulation of those plumbers versus other plumbers, and how you feel it's going for you to be regulating those individuals?
So you'll see that maybe on the road sometimes. You'll see a truck that has the plumbing and the AC and the electrician. So it's those individuals that have those multiple trades under their watch. Our governance over them is going to be through the statute. So it's not really seeing some type of difference. But in terms of how, you know, the program's operated, you know, we have some services. And Lisa and I do talk quite a bit. And I know they have challenges in terms of the financing and funding they've had. But we're fortunate. We are able to do, probably about 95% of our applications can be renewed online. The criminal background question that Senator Hall asked about just last year, for fiscal year 2018, we did 602,000 criminal background checks, of which 19,284 folks had criminal backgrounds. We opened up cases on about 3,000 of those, and ultimately, went through that process. That's some of the benefit we have with our enforcement group. There's a lot of individuals that work in there. But to answer your question directly, I think that those individuals see the difference in how they're able to interact. But at the end of the day, they're still gonna be performing the work, you know, as a plumber and as an AC within the scope of that practice. And so we don't change that. That's how we deliver the service.
So for in terms of continuing education and testing and those things, they're all the same?
Continuing, there's some differences there. We have continuing education courses that are offered online. So they're able to take those courses online. In terms of the making payments online, they can do that as well. We have new programs that are under the VERSA system that the plumbing boards had worked with. It's a pretty challenging group. The electrician and air conditioning programs are under our tulips program. It's a lot more dynamic than what they're able to do with that. But yes, they can, online payments, they can check, you know, their CE courses on our webpage. They can click on the provider there, identify the provider from that, go to their webpage. So we built in some of those services for them. We provide information on our webpage regarding the most common violations, you know, in their particular fields. The air conditioning program and the electrician program, both have separate advisory boards. They're populated primarily by licensed practitioners. We have their meetings, probably about three or four in the last year. They're all done online, so people can watch the meetings online. They can go back, check the archive. They can get copies of the staff reports that are presented to that. I think that's a great service that we provide. It allows for that transparency to be there. If you wanna watch the meeting in the comfort of your pajamas, you can do so. But you can be engaged and be part of the process. One of the unique things about the advisory board process that I think gets lost in the conversation is everyone's saying, "We want our own board." There's a lot, the There's a lot, the licensed practitioners are engaged firsthand in the development of their scope of practice. The TDLR staff is not going to change the way that they would touch a patient, as we have with our podiatry program. We're not going to change the way that they're going to do the work under the code. But we are going to facilitate that. When you look at the rulemaking process for TDLR, they have, the public, the licensees and the public, they have an opportunity to have public comment at the first advisory board meeting, the standard 30-minute comment period, the second advisory board meeting, and even at the commission meeting. So there's a lot of public input, and it's rigorous to make sure you get that back and forth. But I think that's important. Because people think that their profession's going to be lost. They are elevated in the conversations at our agency, and we recognize, I'm not a plumber. You know, my wife would not, I can't turn on the faucet without her permission. I don't know how to work a water bath.
Sounds like my house.
But, so we would never try to interfere with the scope of practice. But on the converse side, having the scope of practice influenced by folks that don't do it regularly, I think that's the challenge that we're really talking about here.
Well, I found that to be particularly interesting, because sometimes when an agency is being suggested to do, if it's a fresh agency, and you may not have had any experience, but you do have some experience there, so I thought that was interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Thompson.
I want to go and ask you a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I listened to your testimony, and I kept hearing a common thread. And that common thread seemed to have been the inability to have sufficient staff to carry out the responsibilities that you are tasked with. Did I misunderstand you?
No, ma'am.
So we are expecting certain things from you, but we have not given you the resources to accomplish those goals that we have tasked you with. Would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, I think that would be a very correct statement.
And could you tell me how long, in terms of years, months, or whichever way you would like to answer this, that you have been on the staff and trying to achieve the task that we have tasked you with?
I've been at the agency since 1992.
Stone age.
Yeah, yeah. And we don't have very many more people now than we did whenever I came to work there. We have three individuals in our licensing department, three and a half, to be perfectly honest. I share half a person in licensing with the enforcement department, in order to cover the enforcement department. I was director of enforcement and had two individuals in the enforcement department when I came to work there. That department now has one additional person in it. And the reason why it has one additional person in it is, in 2004, we implemented all the requirements that Sunset brought about then, and one of those was the implementation of the administrative penalty. So we went and said, we've got to have another person in our enforcement department to help process those. So that's one more person in '04 that we did get. And actually, that person started in '06, I believe.
So how many people are you on the staff, if you had them today, that you could have done a more efficient job?
In a perfect world, oh, a couple of dozen, it'd be great. Right now, I have five people that I'm asking for, and those five people would certainly be very helpful. We are asking for a couple of examiners. We've also asked for individuals to assist in our education program, so that we can further our education program and our public programs without stealing from our exam and our enforcement department.
Are you funded out of GR?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't generate enough, do you generate enough money to sustain your agency?
We generate more than enough funds. We actually put back over $2 million in the general fund this last year. And that's pretty consistent over the last five or six years that we do. We generate more than enough.
And did you ask for the last appropriation, did you ask for assistance, additional personnel?
Yes.
In the session before that, did you ask for additional personnel?
Yes.
And were you given those additional personnels?
I have a breakdown. I can tell you exactly. As a matter of fact, I made it part of my response to you. I have not had any new employees in the last two sessions. I did get field investigators in the previous session.
Okay. And have you, have we, did we decrease your tasks to your agency in those last, those prior sessions?
No, actually, in 2011, we had an additional duty added upon us without any additional staff, which is basically...
Unfurling mandate?
We became a clearinghouse for insurance for plumbers, too. And we certainly don't mind doing that.
I remember that one.
Yeah, but I didn't get any people then. And so I'm kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to come to Vice Chair Patty, but Senator Hall, your light's still on. Did you come back on or didn't you? Okay. Vice Chair Patty.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of different folks did ask questions out, and so I'll start with you. And some of it's a bit of a follow-up on some of the things you addressed already. So I'm not going to go back over the criminal background check, which you stated in your testimony was so critically important, and how important it was to you, but yet 6% doesn't indicate to me that it's incredibly important. And so, but we've kind of already been there, so I'm not going to kind of go down that road anymore here. Also, obviously, how long it takes to get a license, it's been addressed as well, so I won't do that. To the personnel issue, because I seem to be hearing as well, if we just had more money and more people, then we could fix all these problems. And so I want to talk a little bit about that. And you did mention, and I noticed, that you've made requests in some previous buy-in, and specifically for certain types of personnel, and you didn't get that. You mentioned yourself the one enforcement person that you got last time, I think, two times. But I want to touch on the idea of, and what I perceive to be a lack of focus on what the priorities should be. Customer service has been talked about here today, and that is, I don't know what the percentages were, but, you know, majority of your folks in a problem area is in that customer service area. However, when you were making your request and ultimately got your request for an enforcement officer, why didn't you request a customer service person instead of an enforcement person who will touch about 8% of the people as opposed to 60-something percent than a customer service person?
I'll be happy to answer that. We have requested a licensing technician. And I guess I should have spelled it out as a customer service person instead of a licensing technician, and maybe it would have brought about better change. I put down a more advanced person according to the level that I thought we needed, which is a licensing technician. But they're most definitely a customer service person that we've requested before.
Okay. And one other thing, and I'll move on. I think the frustration that you're hearing here is what is seen as a lack of responsiveness to problems. I mean, you're fully admitting your deficiencies and that you have problems in some of these areas. But the frustration, I think, is setting us, because this was identified, and whoever back in '02 probably said the same thing, you're right, we have these problems. The frustration is the failure to address those problems. I'll give you one example. In '02, I saw it here, it's just one of a few, obviously. It was criticized, you know, there was lack of a formal risk-based procedure for receiving complaints. The board even went so far as to adopt a rule in response to that. But it was never implemented, and to this day, it's never been implemented. Correct?
Can I address that issue, sir?
I've asked you a question, so yes, please.
Okay. Going back to one of the things, two, three of the things that Sunset asked us to do in 2002, they asked us to implement a procedure within our database so that we could actually prioritize the complaints as they came in. And we implemented that in our old database. You could choose a priority of one, two, or three, depending upon the severity or the nature of the complaint. In addition, they asked us to recognize, to determine where the worst things were that were happening regionally, and make our database where we could click on that. We did that as well. We took those two very important things that were brought to us from Sunset and moved them over, and we utilize those within the VERSA database right now. So we actually can prioritize complaints and determine whether or not that needs to be a one, two, or a three within our complaint system. As far as a, and we did make a rule, and I do agree, that rule is not as clear as it needs to be. And that can be corrected. And I'll take that responsibility. That rule is not clear. It says we'll prioritize, but it doesn't say how. In addition, the prioritization of complaints, when a person picks up the phone and calls and says they have a complaint, our director of enforcement's a licensed plumber, and he knows full well if that needs to be prioritized right then before it ever even gets on a piece of paper. Can we do better? Yes.
But there's no formal, and so it's essentially subjective based on that person, maybe very capable. But, you know, again, I think the frustration is, you know, 16 years later, and we didn't do what we were supposed to do, and I'm just curious about that. Last question, and I'll move on. Your examiners, unlike in most cases, and as we look at other agencies, is required that your examiners be plumbers. Can you explain why you are unique as compared to vast other groups that that's not necessarily a substantial requirement?
Well, the practical examination, when it was put in place, was developed by plumbers, which are the experts of the plumbing systems. It continues to be graded by a plumber, as far as the practical portion, the rough-in portion, and any of the drawings that are required within that examination.
Would you say that that in any way limits your ability and has any effect on the fact that it takes you eight months to get an exam? Certainly has to affect your ability to fill those positions and have people...
Well, I don't have any positions to fill.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying I stated correctly, but from an examiner's standpoint, I mean, if you had a larger pool of folks for that, I mean, would that not make it easier?
Actually, we did have an individual, we have one person that is not a plumber that works in the examination department, that can schedule and do all of these different things. The examiners do the very specific grading on the technical portion of that exam. Now, other portions of the examination most definitely could be, if they're turned into an electronic situation, then an examiner won't be looking at those particular types of things. We did at one time have an individual that was not a licensee that helped with breakdown, cleanup. That person was lost in a budget cut as well.
All right. I appreciate that. Francis, I've got tough questions for you. And let me first say that, you know, what we're doing here today, we're talking about licensing and how we regulate an industry. And while I fully appreciate and I agree 100% with the issues of public safety, absolutely, we want to ensure absolute public safety. I don't think anything we're talking about here, we're doing it with the intention of in any way harming the public or doing anything. But there seems to be a message that I'm hearing that, you know, somehow if we do this, that somehow we're going to have, public safety is not going to be at a level it should be. You know, the examinations are going to be subpar. You know, where's the expertise come from? And so can you kind of walk us through what this looks, what it looks like, if in fact you have this under TDLR? Specifically with a focus on whether or not we are in any way sacrificing quality in our regulation of this industry, of our ensuring public safety, those type of things?
When I read the staff recommendation, that was at least saying possibly transfer to programs, TDLR, we've already done a lot of research on it. So I took some time, like I think everyone in the room has done, to read the public comments. And they're pretty intense. And the thing that I saw in the public comments was passion and pride. But the other thing I saw in the public comments is that we all shared, and I want to believe that they believe this, but we all shared the concern for public safety and public health. My mother and father will use the services of a plumber. I would never do anything to diminish that opportunity, the service they're going to receive. It's tough to hear and read when people imply that somehow you're going to do something to dismantle that. We would not, and we have not. When the legislature entrusted the regulation of the podiatry program with us last session, that's a big deal. That's an important issue, having doctors under our watch. We have not diminished the safety in that program. That program had similarities. It had, everyone for three offerings a year would come to Austin to take the examination, pay $225 to travel here, just in Austin. Within months of the program being transferred to us, we had that examination across the state in 22 locations, and they're paying $60 for it. We didn't change the underlying elements in the examination. The same folks that developed that examination, subject matter experts who were licensed podiatrists that had their operations, they were still developing that examination. That's the same approach we take for the electrician examination. We have master electricians, journey electricians, journeyman electricians that are sitting there developing that examination and deciding which code we're going to grab the information from, using a psychometrician to make sure that the stems are appropriate, that you have a question, not trying to be deceiving, but actually testing the knowledge and discriminating the knowledge for that individual. That's the same approach that we take for all examinations. TDLR does not insert our knowledge in these areas. We rely on the experts in developing the examinations and the scope of practice. What we try to provide is the infrastructure to where these things can happen efficiently. That podiatry examination, I think, is probably the most relevant and recent one, which is Austin-based examination, within months of the program being transferred, 22 examinations across the state, and lowered the cost from $225 to $60. That's how we work. We rely on the advisory boards, and I know that sounds offensive to folks hearing the word advisory, but they are partners in this process. Those meetings are engaged, they are involved, and we are sitting there listening to these experts wrestle with the areas that the experts should be wrestling with, which is their scope of practice. Not the renewal notice, not how should you set up this element here, but wrestling with their area of expertise, and while we supplement it with our area of expertise, which is making sure that the infrastructure's there. We have a master electrician on our staff, an journeyman electrician on our staff. We have an air conditioning contractor on our staff. We bring that knowledge onboard. We have that in place because we recognize that to have it in-house, even though it's not the only source of information, makes sense. The model that the Plumbing Board has, they have master plumbers on there, and having conversations with them and involved, that's an important part of the process. That's something we would continue to make sure that those experts are engaged. There are a number of folks sitting behind me that have individuals that are plumbers and air conditioning contractors in their association. And they know. They know firsthand how we work and how we do not diminish that public safety. We take it serious, and I know that Lisa does as well. We take that very serious, and we're going to infuse that in the process. But we're going to be innovative and try to develop a lot of improvements. When I read through the implementation plan that the Plumbing Board staff has developed, it's fantastic. There are a lot of great elements in there, things that can turn around the program and the efficiency of operation. They put some thought into it. The challenge will be is making those changes while the phone calls are still coming in, making those changes while the applications are still coming in. That cushion, that ability to absorb it, will be a big challenge. The last thing I'll say in regard to the examination, whether it's transforming, and that's what moving from a practical to a written would do, and I know that hits some folks very hard, but even if the focus was just on the written examination and moving that to a third-party provider, you are going to alleviate so much pressure in terms of the phone calls. When the cosmetology program was being transferred to TDLR, there were 30,000 to 40,000 phone calls... calls associated with just the examination. We couldn't handle it. We couldn't handle it. But the moment we had that exam provider, the individuals were able to contact them either via email or by the phone, so those calls went away. When can I schedule my examination? What's my score? Oh, my gosh, I failed. Can I reschedule that exam? Those calls left our agency and allowed us to focus on some of our core activities. So those are some of the benefits that I know that no matter how the decision comes down, moving those examinations is going to free up some capacity, and that's going to be a great thing for your folks.
All right. So I was kind of trying to answer some of the questions that were thrown out earlier in testimony, so we've kind of addressed the examination expertise. You just talked about that. You know, who's going to provide that expertise? The same people that provided to that?
Absolutely.
The same type of people, certainly. I want to talk a little bit about, if a question was posed, well, how much is it going to cost? And where do the funds come from? And I want to clarify a little bit what I think is maybe a bit of a misunderstanding. When I look at that comparison of current expenditures to projected operational costs, currently, under the current board, it's about $2.6 million. The projected operating cost at TDLR, although at first it's a little higher because you've got a ramping up period there, but let's talk about 2022 on, it settles in at about $2.25, so just over $400,000 savings annually. And so, this is not, this doesn't have anything to do with that excessive amount that's going back to GR right now. The currently $2.6, you would do it for $2.2. So there's still money going to GR. And so this is not a question of, well, why don't you just give us a, you're going to give TDLR that extra money we've been sending to GR? That's incorrect.
And if I could, I could touch on that. One of the things that we trumpet in some of our presentations is the cost savings to the individual. There is a cost-saving equation to GR, no question about that. But the real cost savings, that $2.6 million, that's the plumber's money. That's their money, and over, since 2010, we have left in the pockets of our licensees $20 million. When you take Senate Bill 202 that was transferring the 13 Department of State Health Services programs to us, before they hit our door with the rule changes, they had $1.1 million in savings. Fees that they were paying before at a higher rate, when they came to us, we lowered those fees because the cost was in there. That excess, probably now maybe four sessions ago, it used to be pay and play for the Article VIII agencies. They removed that contingent revenue rider, and now agencies are free to lower their costs and bring them more in line, lower their revenues, excuse me, bring them more in line with their cost. That $2.6 million, under our world, GR wouldn't see it, because we would take steps to lower those fees and say, if it's $420 for a license, then it's going to be $279, or, you know, $243 and 56 cents, and I'm exaggerating on the cents, we don't do that. But I always want the conversation about savings to be twofold. There's a savings to GR, and I know that's important to the documents. Sunset, they'll wrestle you and twist your arm and leg and say that part, but I think what gets lost are the savings to the licensees. They're paying that money. It either needs to go to the services they're receiving that they want to receive or needs to stay in their pockets.
Just for the record, you regulate how many different?
We regulate 39 different programs, 216 license types, and 823,000 licensees. I've been referred to as the Walmart of savings or licensing, and I'm not sure how to take that at Christmas. I think it's a good deal.
Do you regulate any industries of all of those agencies, which is significant, that it takes eight months to take an exam or get a license?
We don't, and again...
What would be the longest time, you think, estimate? I won't hold you to it.
Okay, thank you, and I don't want to... Most of our programs, once a person's eligible, will take the examination. They can schedule within three or four days, and that's pretty much the norm. When you get it out to the exam providers, they have the facilities, 22 facilities that are located around the state. I was going to do an analysis for Chairman Flynn that, you know, it's a 28-minute ride from Van to Tyler to do that examination. So it's about three or four days, the examination. Now, we do have the athletic trainer program, which offers the examination, I think, four times a year, so that one is quarterly. That would be the longest.
Right. Okay. Well, lastly, you know, we've heard here that if we just had more money, we had more people, we wouldn't have these problems. We're ultimately going to give you $400,000 less than what is currently being spent. So if we do that, is it going to take eight months to get a license?
It won't, because we're going to work with the experts. If that happens, we're going to, if the decision is to transform the practical examination, we're going to develop the best practical examination in the nation, and it's going to be developed by plumbers, and it's going to be offered, you know, around the state. I will say that, wow, it seems like I'm doing a bad deal, giving them $400,000? We can always do it with more money at TDLR, too. We went through the budget cut last year, 14 employees, so agencies had to go through that, and we recognize that. We're not fully staffed either.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll just ask a couple of quick questions, if I may. Mr. Surt, how long have you been the board chair?
Been two years.
Two years. And how long, total time on the board?
On the board? About three and a half years.
Three and a half years. What is your longest, not necessarily the name, but what's the longest-serving board member you have right now? Who served on the board longest of all your board members?
Gera.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Mr. Gettner, Rick Gettner?
How many years?
Two terms.
That was before me, so...
Two terms would be 12 years?
12 years.
12 years. How many times has he come to a finance hearing when the Article I was being heard for your budget?
None that I know of. As far as Rick?
I believe Rick came last session with us.
Last session?
I believe, I couldn't swear to it. I can find out.
What your answer to that question should impart to you is, look, I'm very pleased that you're here with your executive director, but you're not the only agents. I mean, look, Brian's here, and he's already made a plea for money, okay? SWARM was in here before you. Our securities, what the Finance and Appropriations Committees deal with, I've got seven university systems, TCEQ, I mean, I give you the list. I can't expect you to do anything with nothing, so there is certainly truth to what Representative Thompson has said. The state has to balance its budget, but there is merit to having the board chair or the senior member of the board, if it's not the chair, to come into finance and articulate these challenges. Because, look, I'll tell you, the thing that strikes me most in your report is when there's elements in your previous Sunset review that are still germane in your current Sunset review. The legislature writes law, not suggestions. And that, and there's a frustration with an agency that is, recalcitrant is probably too strong a word, but if it takes 16 years to still get some element from the previous Sunset, is this an agency that is moving with a purpose? And there's doubt here in that regard, because of the previous Sunset report still being germane to the current Sunset report. I will also tell you that this has generated, in my mind, a failure on my part as the Chair of nominations, because in my vice chair, sitting over here with Senator Watson, I would have rather have seen the Sunset review, I'd rather know what I know now four years ago, because remember the veterinary board that you dealt with last go-round? I've always viewed the plumbers' examining board as a very technical board, and do I bring somebody in to, and frankly, I think we would have been better served if I brought somebody in two to four, but I don't know that I would have known the questions to ask till now instead of four years ago. I'm not sure how I solved that problem, but I know my vice chair would concur with that assessment, because I wasn't going to call in the veterinary board until you had gone through it with them with Sunset two years ago. So there, so what I'm, I'm going the long way around the barn. My own train of thoughts, caboose, I'm going to try to bring up here, is that there is merit to the members of the board that the governor nominates and the Senate confirms. If you're not present, if senior leadership is not present, to be that voice that says, legislature, you've really got to think through this, and you've got to fight your battles with ammunition, not emotion, because everybody walks in with emotion. And I'm doing my best to fight, as a member of Finance and of the other members up here, you're doing your best to make sure you're making the best decisions based upon the ammunition in front of you, not the emotion in front of you.
That's correct, and this will be my third one.
Yeah. So I implore you, be succinct, no matter what decision comes out of here, be succinct, get to the point, and data drives it all, because remember, when we, I'll go back to the founding principles of our founders. In the federal constitution, when it talks about the Congress shall have the ability to regulate interstate commerce, the founders that wrote that portion of the Constitution, and at the time of the founding, the word "to regulate" had the meaning of "to make regularly occurring." And our problem is here is we don't have the licensing and renewals regularly occurring. So it's not a matter of how many rocks, and I don't think this is your intent, but it's not a matter of how many rocks we can put in somebody's rucksack for the sake of it, it's how do we make it as streamlined and free-flowing and regularly occurring as possible? And that's the challenge that we face before us. I won't filibuster anymore. Let me say this, thank you for coming, because, look, you're here in Austin, you're from San Antonio, board member, I'm sorry. Let me, I'll come to Ms. Thompson here in a second, but you do this for less pay than what we up here get. I mean, and you're, and you're, look, y'all are not sitting at home waiting for a call from a member of the legislature. You're running your businesses and the like. I mean, this is hard work. I mean, this is, you know, this isn't done for the joy of passing time. So your thoughtfulness, your work is appreciated. I want you to know that, and I want you to understand that, because our ultimate goal here is to do what's best for the ultimate customer, the people of the state of Texas, and we appreciate your hard work. With that, Representative Thompson.
Mr. Francis, if we sent this agency over for an incubation position, what would that be like?
Senator Thompson, we'd have to think about that, but I will start by saying, no matter what the decision is, TDLR is going to be here to help. So whether you formally say incubate or TDLR, I know that issue number 1.3 speaks to the agencies working together to regulation and process improvement and those sort of things. We'll be engaged however you want. I haven't thought about incubation, but I can.
I mean, we have some new members on the board. I'm on the diocese, and that's what I was asking the question, for the benefit of them as well.
Yes, ma'am.
What would be the incubation, what would be synonymous to an incubation process?
So when the Geoscientists Board was first created and statute, they had no infrastructure in place, so they did not have an executive director, the accounting department, a general counsel. And so the governor's office worked with TDLR, and we incubated them for about a year and a half to get them on their feet, set up their accounts, set up their processes, do the hosting of their commission meetings, and we were a partner.
Did we send the department, let me see, that was one board I think we, I think you incubated, was that, did you incubate the veterinarians?
No, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, we incubated the Residential Construction Commission, but I don't know if we're allowed to say it out loud anymore.
Okay.
But that was the other group that we incubated as well, and it was the same thing of providing them the infrastructure and getting them up and running to where they could go on their own.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much for your time. By the way, I'm not from Austin, I'm from Mission, Texas, down...
Oh, okay, I have Austin here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So that was Rick Gettner, the one that we were talking about earlier, but it feels like that this board is an antiquated board, that we're still 20 years, 25 years behind in our processes, I guess. Of course, me jumping in here and, you know, being the chairman, appointed chairman a couple of years ago, I feel like General Sanchez when he was sent to Iraq, you know, towards the end of the war. But I'll tell you, the individuals that we have, not only in staff, but the individuals that we have, the 85,000 licensees, they're hard-working individuals. They, they, they've had a process that they've done since 1942, 1945, and it's a process, me as a civil engineer, that I see, it's, as a civil engineer myself, and the exams that I have to follow and the continuing education that I have to follow, it's a process that is pretty harassing for them to do on a yearly basis. My, my profession, we usually work, 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 we wait till the last minute, take the exam for continuing education, and then go through it. Our friends and families that are plumbers, they work really hard. They put in long hours. They put in 60, 70 hours a week sometimes, including the owners, and I'm talking to the RMPs. And I know there's a lot of questions on the processes that we have, which, by the way, we as a board met on a special meeting a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, to make sure that we address a lot of the questions that Sunset had already said. And yes, we agree on, we agree completely on. Me as a chair, I would like to see if there is an opportunity for us to not only get more funding, if it's possible, because we did fight for funding, and the funding has been fought and has shown on the minutes, where myself and our executive director, even prior to me, have been coming by and, but if there is funding, there's an opportunity to grasp what TDLR has as far as their processes and change our process to that, and give us that opportunity to make sure and we continue as, you know, the board for the plumbers, the 85,000 licensees. We have the people, we have the processes. I understand that we are antiquated, that's no doubt. I mean, we basically met three weeks ago and says, okay, we just needed a slap in the hand. Me from an outsider, not being a plumber, there's a lot of things that we could honestly do, and if, with y'all's help, you know, and any other agency's help if needed, whatever the guidance of the Sunset Commission is, we'd be happy to work with them. It's just, again, we've got the people, we've got the knowledge, we've got the state of Texas behind us, and I think that we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we'll move to public testimony. Thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you all for hearing us.
Thank you. Members and for the collected individuals gathered, everybody knows Texas is a big state. I would just simply reiterate, I've got folks from not only my own district, but each of you members have folks up here. I've got folks from Odessa, Alpine, from across the state. I'm going to bring you up in the order that you have asked, that you've signed up to testify, that's the only way I know how to do it fairly. What I would ask is, please adhere to the three minutes, when the green light comes on, it'll stay on for two minutes, the yellow light comes on when you have a minute left, and bring your thoughts to a close. Bring the caboose of your train of thought through the crossing at the red light. Don't take that as the opportunity to hurry through the next page of your comments and testimony. For those of you that I get to later, if there is, if your testimony is duplicative, please still come forward and please tell us, but if the point's already been made that you're going to make, you can save us time and save folks that have got to get out of here and get back home and get out of Austin traffic, no disrespect to my senator from Austin.
If I can get your vote, we can fix that.
But you understand what I'm asking. I want everybody in here, all 44 that have signed up for public testimony, to be heard and be courteously and graciously heard. But if you're at... But if you're at the end, you know, and folks have taken a lot of time to make the same point, please be as brief as possible as you, or brief as possible as you can. So, with that, I'm going to call the first four to come forward, and then the next four to our on-deck row, so that we have as little transition time as possible. Tommy Irvin, David Cross, Robert Stricker, and Roy Chapman, if you would, please step forward. And then, next four on deck, Thomas Lund, Steve Harmon, Gail Lux, and James Walls, if you would come forward to the on-deck row. And with that, Chair recognizes Mr. Irvin. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Tommy Irvin, I'm from Odessa, Texas. You made a comment earlier about paperwork like this, mine's in handwritten. I think you'll see a lot of plumbers that come up here that have the same thing.
Was that taking any time from you?
Yes, sir.
You know, the joke about, you know, you can't get a plumber when you need one?
Yes, sir.
I don't need a plumber, and I've got how many of them in this room?
Yes, sir. And we all made sure that when you drink the water today in this building right here, it's also.
That's right, that's right.
Yes, sir.
No, and I won't take that, so Madam Clerk, if you'd start the three minutes now. Thank you, Mr. Irvin. The four of yours.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Tommy Irvin, I just turned 65 years old a couple of weeks ago. But I remember on a June morning in 1962, my dad come in, he said, "You're not going to sleep this summer, you're going to go to work." That started my career in water. And I've advanced over toward several large water projects throughout West Texas. So, at the age of nine years old, I started my career. In 1984, I got my Master Plumber's License. Since then, I've got license under TDLR, my Irrigator's License, HVAC License, my Master Waterwell Pump Installer's License. On the TCEQ, I've received my On-Site Sewage Facilities, Level Number One. I've even got a Propane Chapter D License under the Railroad Commission. So, I know what some of these TDLR people do, a lot of them do a pretty good deal, but there's other issues in there that I'd answer some questions if some had some, okay? My granddad started a business that I run today in 1934, so I'm third generation, so I've been around for quite a while, okay? And I remember when I went to get some of these licenses, how hard it was, and out of the six employees that I've got working on their journeyman plumber's license today, I couldn't do it without the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. It just, this just wouldn't happen, okay? Mrs. Hill, I've talked to her personally more than once because other people can't get on the phone. She's taken care of me, and I appreciate her. I've got 17 employees overall. Every one of us know that we have customers and we have neighbors that depend on us to take care of their water system, no matter if it's freshwater coming in for drinking, bathing and cooking, that when that water leaves that water meter out there, that they depend on us plumbers to make sure that it's safe for their kids, grandkids, nursing homes, hospitals, and whatever, and they make sure that when that water's used, it's wasted and it gets out of that building. Indoor piping didn't start in Texas in 1897. We've heard about all the documentaries about the diseases and what else going on, so I'll leave that one alone. The question today is not a money issue, it's a decision that this board's going to make, and what, and how y'all are going to affect the people of the state of Texas. I understand y'all have a difficulty on this board. I respect what you're going through, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'd appreciate you letting the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners exist after September 1st of 2019, because they do a good job. Merry Christmas, may God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe, don't go anywhere, in case anybody wants to ask questions.
I'd appreciate some of them.
Safe travel back to Odessa, but after we dismiss you. Mr. Cross, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's David Cross. I hold an RMP license, I'm counted, I think, in some of your statistics, maybe five times, which has always kind of alarmed me a little bit, because I think it inflates the number of licensees that we claim that we have. But anyhow, I've got the RMP, the Master's License, Journeyman's License, I've got the multipurpose residential fire protection endorsement, as well as the WSPS. I've got a Plumbers Contractors License in Oklahoma, and also have the Railroad Commission's Propane License. I want to say that for years, I've been saying that our industry's killing itself. I have seen some of our rules and some of our regulation make it very, very difficult for us, even those of us who want to do it the right way. People might misconstrue what it is I'm trying to say, but as I read the report, before I read the report, I was angry. I was angry at you guys, because the information that came forth sounded like it was going to be devastating for me, my livelihood, and all these good people in this room. As I read your report, and I read it twice, I couldn't find very much with which I disagreed, and I was shocked. Now, I have nothing against the plumbing board, I like the plumbing board. I think that they do a lot of very good things, I think that my interaction with them has always been healthy, although it's not always been enjoyable, but with good purpose. I don't know that the recommendation to kill off the plumbing board is the right move. Of course, I don't know that it isn't, that it's the wrong move. But what I do know is, is that some of the things that you've recommended are brilliant. I've had struggled with recently learning that I was in violation of plumbing law when I had an apprentice merely add a pump or two of air into a gas system that was already tested by one of my journeymen for the following morning for an inspection. I was told I was in violation because that that was plumbing. So, there's a lot of things I could get into detail that are constraints on us. But, the plumbing board itself, some of the things it stands for just have to be left intact. Let me ask you this, we talk about, I've heard pilot licensing. Well, don't we require welders to do a hands-on exam? I know we do. How about surgeons? And I know that you can laugh and say, well, you know, surgeons plumbing, but there is a need for a practical examination. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, it's too serious what we have to do. And so, I can go on and on, but I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Thank you for joining us today. Please remain until, Mr. Stricker.
Yeah, my name is Robert Stricker, and I carry a lot of licenses as well. Inspector, Master Plumber, got all three of the endorsements. I've been Chief Plumber Inspector of San Antonio for 18 now, the 21 years I was there before I retired from municipal work. Got a lot of experience in that. I'm also an instructor for the continuing ed. But I want to hit on three things, you should have my paperwork there. Moving the board to TDLR, I don't have anything against TDLR, but lack of some things that I've been saying already, how are you going to do the practical side if you don't have an agency, the board where they have the facilities to do so? And I feel very strongly about the practical side. I help plumbers along the way, or apprentices along the way to get there. I've had many apprentices under me, and every single one of them have gotten, not only gotten their license, have gone on to get their Master License and their business. They got businesses, so I felt proud of that aspect. But the practical side of it is what helped them be what they are. You can have a lot of guys that can study, and they can go pass a written test, put them out there to do it, and they don't do it right. Now, we're jeopardizing the citizens with someone that really can't understand the mechanics, and I use the word mechanics, because that's what it is, doing the mechanics and the hydraulics of doing plumbing. She talks about eliminating the registrations that the apprentices can get, but then she says, "We've got obstacles in the way for these guys." Well, you're just taking away a stepping stone, getting an RUI or a drain cleaner, that's a stepping stone for those guys, and it's a pay boost and everything else to keep them in here, to keep people interested in staying in plumbing. If they're not getting the pay boost, they probably will fall out, but she wants to take that away. Throughout her report, it sounds contradictory, and I know most of, I have to agree that some of what she says makes sense, but when you read other parts, it contradicts itself, especially when she says, you know, she's talking about moving the board and doing away of practical, and then very end, she said, "Oh, but man, the plumbing is so important, we've got to make sure to protect the health and safety." Well, which is it? If you want to protect the health and safety, you've got to do a full examination, and unfortunately, it's going to take the practical side, which takes a little time. Now, I did send suggestions in through TDLR, I mean, through the Sunset and various things, that put the written out there. Yeah, we can do that in any college, get the written out there, because then you're only sending people to the practical that have passed that part, okay? And for some of the guys that are mechanically inclined, that is the hard part for them. But they're going to go there, and guess what, they're going to bang them out. And maybe now, they can do two or three times a day, because they don't have all three phases of test, they just got the hands-on, and those guys are fast with the hands, they can get it done. So, there's a way to help streamline that eight months. I agree, that is terrible. And I had everybody in my classes send in their responses about that. So, we do need to get it down here. But we can't take away advancement opportunities with these drain cleaner registrations or UAT registrations, and we need to keep the board intact for its purposes of being able to do the practical exam as we see it. And again, the health and safety of citizens is priority, period.
Thank you, Mr. Richter. Thank you. Mr. Chapman, you're recognized.
Yes. Hi, my name's David Chapman, I'm a little nervous, I guess, I don't know what happened. Anyway, Licensed Journeyman Plumber, I'm fortunate enough to be a part of a company that is the 11th, 100th fastest-growing company in the nation, 134th in the state, and third in Houston. We do that with a lot of great young men that have come into the trade, we've got them all licensed. Part of, one of the things that we're doing is, I guess we're kind of cheating the system a little bit, we're sending our guys, our apprentices' information about six months early, so that they can go ahead and have a test date by the time that they're ready for a tradesman. So, if there's a backlog, you know, we've gotten smart as far as, in the field, how we're going to handle this, how to get these guys through the system faster. So, six months out, they have a test date, they have all their classes taken care of, they go down, they get to do the stepping stones, where they get to climb in their career in advance, and that's what we want for all of them. The board has never, ever let me down. Anytime I've needed the board, I've been able to call the board, get ahold of the board, have issues resolved, questions answered. So, they've been very successful for us. They're a resource, they're a tool, they're not a hindrance. We all want to keep the water system safe, and it's this, it happens this fast. Your neighbor has an irrigation system, he pulls his backflow preventer, there's a major leak next door, we pull poisons and toxins into the system without the proper backflow, somebody gets sick, be it your neighbor, best friend, or whoever, and that's our job. And we see this on a daily basis. Handymen coming in and pulling vent systems off water heaters, not installing them properly, carbon monoxide dioxide pouring into the homes. This is, this is something that, with the proper training, direct supervision, which is what we do on a daily basis, that should not be overlooked. So, thank you all again, Merry Christmas, guys. God bless.
All right. Thank you very much, members. Any questions? If not, thank you very much for being here. All right. The Chair calls Thomas Lund, Steve Harmon, Gail Lux, and James Walls on deck. If you'll come up to the front here, next we'll have Brian Melton, Russell Wyman, Diane Villarreal, and Johnny Vick. Those folks are on deck. And we'll start on this side, if you would, to state your name and who you represent for the record, and four of yours.
My name is Thomas Lund, actually employee of Mr. Chapman, I've just spoke, from Jetty Precision out of Conroe, Texas. Journeyman plumber, just kind of wrote this out here. My name is Thomas Lund, I'm a journeyman plumber out of the greater Houston area, one of the largest plumbing markets in the country. In response to the Sunset Commission wanting to remove the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners as the authority on plumbing in the state of Texas, I'm opposed. My career as a plumber, I have worked under direct supervision of either a journeyman plumber or responsible master plumber for over the 8,000 hours to earn the right to take my journeyman's plumbing exam. I have taken the courses and continuing education necessary to maintain and expand my plumbing skills and set out as, by the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. I have shown the TSPE that I have the knowledge and practical skills to be a plumber in the state of Texas. As a plumber in the service industry, I've come across many homes and businesses that have had repairs made by licensed and non-licensed plumbers that were in clear code violation. As a result, these repairs have either affected, sorry, my page just jumped around here, either affected or had the potential to affect people in very dangerous ways, whether it was cross-contamination causing contaminated, non-podable water into a puddle water system of a family's home, making the entire family greatly ill, an improper gas line connection that had potential to turn a family's drain backyard, barbecue kitchen into a news-worthy explosion, or the drain waste and vent connections installed improperly by a licensed plumber causing constant, sorry, causing sewer gas to build in elderly couples' homes, sewer gas so severe that the couple would get violently nauseous anytime they would stay in their only restroom for long periods of time. These are a few incidents I've personally seen, I've witnessed, and heard of many more horror stories from colleagues in the field. The TSPE are there to respond to complaints to the public, to hold licensed plumbers accountable for poor workmanship, and to keep non-licensed plumbers from entering the field and performing potentially life-threatening mistakes. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners is not perfect, there are issues that need to be resolved, there are many, removing them altogether is not the answer. Better funding to better regulate is a step in the right direction. To remove the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners is, let's see, hold on a second. And to no longer require a person to be an apprentice under a direct supervision or responsible master plumber for 4,000 hours it takes to get their tradesman, or the 8,000 hours it takes to get their journeyman, would be ill-advised decision. These licenses are needed to show a person is competent in their abilities to protect the health of the public. The board needs to be there to oversee the education of the rising number of people attempting to become a plumber in the field, they need to be able to oversee the complaints against plumbers that are in the field who do not uphold the standards and codes of our trade. The board needs to be left in place to examine our skills in a practical setting to show that not only we have the knowledge to pass a written test, but do demonstrate the knowledge and hands-on training to perform our trade.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. And as has been the practice, we'll let everyone testify, and then we'll put up the questions to the folks here. So, we appreciate your testimony, and, sir, you're next, if you would, state your name and who you represent.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Harmon, I am a fourth-generation master plumber, and I've held a journeyman since 1997, and I do support my Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. I have this nice thing written out that took me about eight hours to get it figured out, to get it down to three minutes, but most everything's already been touched on by the previous four or five guys. I don't feel that abolishing our state board would serve a better purpose in any aspect. The removal of the practical skills portion of the examination would be ludicrous. As a service plumber, I walk in every day to multiple houses and see instances that were installed by unqualified individuals that could kill a whole household, they just got lucky. You go to sleep one night, somebody connects your water heater vent, have a water heater installed by a handyman, or an unlicensed individual, or inexperienced individual, you eat dinner, you go to sleep at night, you or your whole family doesn't wake up. That's what you face. It's removing the responsible master plumber endorsement and adding a plumbing contractor. Within the Sunset Report, it stated that we shall apply to be a plumbing contractor, not that we'll be grandfathered, not that we will be issued, but that we will be eligible to apply. Me and a lot of the other responsible masters in this room have already met the eligibility requirements, we should be grandfathered if this thing goes through. We should just be issued a plumbing contractor license, we've already done all the required steps, we've already carried the insurance. I've heard the issue of criminal background checks come up. Me, as a business owner, and most other business owners in the service industry, we perform criminal background checks. A lot of times, it's part of a majority of our contracts, so we pick up as business owners in a lot of places of where the board might drop off. So, thank you for your time, that's all that I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon, I appreciate your testimony. Gail Lux.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity today. My name's Gail Lux, and I represent Texas State Association of Plumbing Inspectors and the City of Cedar Hill as the building official and a licensed plumbing inspector. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners is a vital agency for the health and safety of the state of Texas and its citizens. Their enforcement of the state laws and adopted plumbing codes is critical in assisting citizens with complaints of poor and illegal work from performed by licensed and non-licensed The employees of this agency assist cities in ensuring that the citizens of their communities are served safely and properly. They also help protect the citizens of the unincorporated areas to ensure they receive the same safety as in those incorporated areas. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners has assisted Texas State Association of Plumbing Inspectors in training licensed and prospective licensees at our annual conference for over the last 71 years. and prospective licensees at our annual conference for over the last 71 years. For the past seven years, the agency has given exams at our conferences to assist cities in getting licensed inspectors their endorsements from classes taken during that week. This agency strives to assure that we have compliant, competent people installing and maintaining a proper working sanitary system to protect the health of all Texans and its visitors. Removal of the practical portion of the exam will lower the skill and level of the service of plumbing provided to the public. Plumbers are the original healthcare professionals, and to combine this agency with TDLR will lower the safety of the public. The agency has been making improvements to their process, but like all agencies, they are restricted by the financial resources the state allows them to operate. The issue of requiring a RMP to each, for each company to just have a business license is a mistake for the industry. As far as, I would ask the Sunset Commission and the Plumbing Board that when they say the 6% of the applicants have been background checked for criminal backgrounds, is that of the new applicants that are applying for a license, or is that all applicants, including renewals? Because I think that the 6% may be understated if they're talking about the actual new applicants that have been applying to the board for a new license or for exam. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lux. Mr. Walls?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and committee members. I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and speak before you. Also, I'd like to thank you all for your great service to the great state of Texas. And I emphasize great state of Texas because all the other states I go to and get up and present, I say the great state of Texas. And I really mean that because I'm a true, born in Dallas, raised in Texas, and don't ever want to leave. And I visit a lot of other states. But my title is I'm a reasonable representative. I'm going to speak on the manufacturing side. I represent the Cast iron and soil pipe institute, which we actually, I represent three domestic manufacturers of cast iron soil pipe and fittings which is used in this capital for the plumbing and storm drains. And we actually have one manufacturer located in Tyler, Texas. I'm also the past, I guess, chief plumbing inspector. I worked for the City of Garland for 19 years. 10 of those years, from 1988 to 1999, I was not, 98, I'm sorry, I was the chief plumbing mechanical inspector. And I want to kind of focus on the practical portion of the examination. And the reason I do that, I serve on a couple of national committees for plumbing apprentice contests, for ones which is Skills USA. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not. But it's basically high school programs, trade school programs, things like that, get plumbers, HVAC, everybody involved in the professions, and I call it professions. In Louisville, Kentucky, every year that we go to this contest, we had 51 contestants from all of the United States, and they installed cast iron, practical applications on plumbing. And a lot of those applications, these young men and women, they don't have a clue what they're doing. And the reason you want practical part of it, because plumbing is practical. Everything we do is practical in our business and stuff. We have to sit there and focus on the practical part of the application. You don't want somebody in your house that's unqualified to perform any task that's actually going to hurt anybody in your family or your relatives, anything like that. I got kids and grandkids that I want to make sure that they grow safe. I've got a son that actually was tested by the Plumbing Board. And I want to sit there and before it goes off, I know I talk quite a bit, but the Plumbing Board has done nothing but assist us. I was fortunate enough to be president of the Texas State Association of Plumbing Inspectors twice, and they've always showed up. With TDLR, I've got to sit there and say, as a person that has to work with them and stuff, we've asked them on several occasions to come to our conference and educate us on what they do, and they didn't show up. So they'd always find a reason to cancel. The Plumbing Board was always there for us, and I'm here to sit there and stand up for them today. So thank you very much for your time. If you've got any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walls. Members, questions? Mr. Lambert?
Yes, just wanted to ask, do any of you have any licenses that are down to the purview of the TDLR? Any of you forward?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr.? If not, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Appreciate your testimony. Call up Brian Melton, Russell Wyman, Diane Villarreal, and Johnny Vick on deck, Jeffrey Lebruski, Cliff Curry, Vernon Imken, and William Venable II.
Again, we'd ask that you state your name and who you represent for the record. And Mr. Melton, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Melton. I'm a journeyman plumber. Unlike a lot of people that are here, they've been around a long time. They dealt with the Plumbing Board. I've dealt with them about six years now. I can't say it's been the best, but I also could think it could be a lot worse. Here recently, I had to wait 10 months total to take a test that would better me and my family for a pay grade and all that great stuff. But doling it down and taking just a written portion of a test to do a job that we do here, I don't think that that's what should happen. If it does turn into a situation like that, I do feel that for the first couple of years, it might go okay. But after that, you're going to need more plumbers to catch up for what the other plumbers from the TDLC have done. The board could be better, and there's a lot of other stuff that they could do a lot better. But in a whole, they've always been there for me. If I had a question, even down to when we take our tests, if they don't give you the answer, but if you know what you're talking about, you know what you're doing, they're there to help us. They're not here to give us a license, just a blank license or anything like that. You have to be skilled in order to get it. And if it's moved to a different organization where there isn't plumbers taking care of it or being, you know, part of it, then I don't really see how it could be very practical or useful. I appreciate all you all being here, and thank you so much.
All right. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Wyman?
Russell Wyman, reside in Dallas, Texas. I'm a former chief plumbing and mechanical code administrator for the city of Dallas, representing myself and supporting the Plumbing Board as a standalone agency. No one goes into public service with the intent of causing harm to the citizens of the state, any individual or their family, or to any group of people. We want to do good things, doing what is right to protect the interest of our citizens and anyone that has afforded the opportunity to visit our state. We strive to leave it a better place than we found it, better for those that come after us, and better for generations to come. We're all trying to do what is right. We just have different opinions as to how we can best accomplish it. The TDLR has been around since 1909. When it was determined that plumbers and their associated activities needed to be regulated by the, at the state level, your predecessors knew this responsibility had to be carried out within their own agency, the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. I do not believe you can remove or reduce the funding intended to be used for improved regulatory practices and oversight provided by one agency, and think a second agency can miraculously achieve those improvements without affording them those same resources the original agency was asking for. Doing so will result in diminished quality of our pipe systems and the diminished quality of the workforce we count on for those services. Any neglect of our responsibility may first be apparent in a smaller community, one that can easily be ignored, then possibly a larger one. No matter how it unfolds, Texas will just become another state that was willing to risk the health and safety of their citizens because they could not see the necessity to fund such an important cause. Quality comes at a cost, a cost that ultimately pays dividends. The value of knowing we can provide high-quality piping systems for our citizens by regulating the quality of materials allowed to be used in Texas, the value of knowing we can provide a workforce of individuals that have the skills necessary to succeed in this industry through the training provided, if we are given that opportunity. We can expand the value of partnerships that are already in place between our inspectors, our trainers, our licensees, and ultimately, the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners, who we look to for guidance and oversight, if you let us do it. We are not asking for additional tax dollars to help us obtain the value we seek. We are just asking that we be allowed to utilize the monies we have already contributed as an industry to ensure that true value is afforded the citizens of this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. And Ms. Villarreal?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I am from Mr. Hall's district, proudly represented, and I represent myself. My name is Diane Villarreal. I proudly received my first plumbing license in 1981 and my plumbing inspector's license in 1994. I hold licenses in three different state agencies, including the TDLR. I'm here to declare my absolute support of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners and for the TSPE to remain a standalone agency. I also request this commission to identify the life-sustaining responsibilities of the plumbing industry and provide the necessary support to the TSPE to meet the growing demands placed upon our industry and agency. Knowing you were going to hear from a group of plumbers today, this morning, did you give thought to the water you use to brush your teeth, or the water you use for that oh-so-important first cup of coffee? If you did, great. For that moment, you had the sense of security that your plumber provided your family. If you didn't, don't worry, we still have your back. As a retired chief plumbing and mechanical inspector for a city of over 1.3 million, I wish everyone on this commission had the opportunity to ride with a plumbing inspector to see the horrible effects of a bad plumbing installation from unqualified persons, and the beautiful artwork a qualified education, educated professional plumber installs with complete concern for the public safety. Sadly, I've witnessed the aftermath of bad plumbing and the devastation that followed. I thought of bringing a few examples for show and tell, but I knew Capitol Security would never let me in the door with such disgusting samples. Plumbing is a profession of, is not a profession of comfort or entertainment or pleasure. Plumbing is a profession which has sustained life for centuries. Life is precious, but without clean drinking water, qualified sanitation, and nourishment grown with clean water, the quality of life will diminish. The loss of one life is too high a price to pay for downsizing or consolidating for profit. Please keep the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners, allow the agency, the Plumbing Board, and the plumbing industry to develop a progressive program for the future, the future of Texas. And the future of Texas awaits your decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Vick, you're recognized.
Thank you all.
I think you came the furthest today, I think, from Alpine, I think. I'm not sure.
Four hundred and four miles.
Mr. Navarres.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. You're recognized.
My name is Johnny Vick. I am the responsible master plumber of Vick's Plumbing in Alpine, Texas. I also carry a BPAT, which is regulated by the TCQ. And I pay my fees to the Railroad Commission for my LP gas installers. I'm here today in support of keeping the State Board of Plumbing Examiners as a regulatory agency of the Texas plumbers. A lot of everything I've written down here has already been touched on. I want to say that, you know, we are, as an industry, as a plumbing industry, as licensed plumbers, we are a proud group. We can be a little rough around the edges sometimes. And it's been stated many times that our business is the public safety and health of fellow Texans. And I believe that this Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiner does a great job. I think there can be some improvements. I don't see where the TDLR, as big as an industry or as big as a government agency as they have become, can benefit the Texas plumbers and the Texas, the Texas public and stuff. And so, again, I'd like to say, thank you all, and I am here in support of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Patty? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Melton?
Yes, sir.
I want to go back to a statement you made related to an additional license that you were going to get that would, you know, allow you a pay bump and
Right, so
And you said it took you 10 months to get that license. So was it 10 months?
Well, first, it takes two years to get the license, but then you get, then you have to, you know, ask to take the test. I waited 10 months after that point to actually take the test.
Take a written test?
No, it's all, so it's written, practical, and then shop work.
Okay, so all of that, it was 10 months to take all that stuff?
I had to wait 10 months to take it all.
Right. You had to wait that, why were you told you had, it took 10 months?
The reason why is because there was a backlog, as you know. There can be different ways to fix that, yes. One was brought up earlier, you can go ahead, and I didn't know that this was possible, but you could call up to the board 10 months prior to your test date, or, you know, till you can have your test date, and then put your paperwork in, and then wait. That way, that was a suggestion that I always brought up, is if I have to wait two years to take a certain test, then, you know, at the one-year, two-month mark, can I put my paperwork in so that at the two-year mark, I can take my test, or a couple months after? We all agree that three months is what we should maximally have to wait to take a test to better yourself. Waiting 10 months is, it's ridiculous. I mean, it's hard to say that, it's hard to say that, you know, that's okay. But do I think that they should streamline the test, or, you know, have just a written portion to get a license easier or faster? No, I mean, that's going backwards. We have to figure out a way to take both scenarios or both agencies and take the good from this one and the good from that one, but not just throw away the Texas Board of, you know, plumbing education.
If you don't mind mentioning, I'm not going to ask you what you make, but you stated this particular situation, it was going to allow you to get a step.
Yeah, of course.
Would you share how much of a step that is?
I mean, it all depends on
On an inch?
Yeah, whoever you work for, what you, you could work commission, you could work salary, you could work hourly. It all depends on what you want to do. But if you want to talk hourly-wise, it would be a few dollars.
A few dollars.
An hour.
Right.
Commission-wise, it's really up to you.
Yeah. I guess my point would be, you know, even if we were to agree, and I don't agree, that three months is necessarily acceptable, but
I mean, not the worst.
That was, you know, if that was the worst, even, that was still seven months of however much more money you would have made.
Yeah, for sure. And that's where I feel that there's a downfall on the Plumbing Board. But to abolish it, or to make it easier to get a test, or to pass a test, I don't feel that that's the necessity of what we should do. And if that does happen, like I said, you know, that'll be fine for a couple of years, but then you all are going to need a lot more plumbers to fix all the stuff that you allowed the people to have a plumbing license that shouldn't have a plumbing license. So if you give it to the other organization and they streamline and just start handing out license, it's going to make me better. Because at the end of the day, after two or three years of that happening, they're going to pay me more to fix all the stuff that you guys allowed the other licensed people to do. So
Well, I can assure you, and I think probably everyone else up here agrees too, we're not going to make any decisions up here that we feel are going to sacrifice
Right, for sure, but
This being done for the public's safety
For sure, and I understand that.
So what we're charged with here is, how do we do it better?
For sure.
More efficiently.
And also
And ultimately, you will benefit personally from it.
Right.
And that's our task as Sunset up here. So don't think for a second that we're
No, I don't think that y'all are
We're attacking you in any way.
No, no, for sure. I know, and you guys are just wanting, no. But also, if you don't mind one other thing, you know, it was, it was kind of said that, you know, you could get a pilot's license for, you know, 12 hours, that's, you know, 12-hour test to get a pilot's license. Well, if you have a pilot's license for 300 people, like was suggested, that's 300 people that are going to die if you crash it. If it happens to hit a community, maybe we'll call it 600. You have someone with the license to do plumbing that's not qualified, how many people are you going to really affect? 300, 600, or a million?
Well, one would be too many.
Yeah, I agree.
Last question I have is actually from Ms. Villarreal. You mentioned that you have some other licenses that you have, and in particular, you had something at TDLR. What is that?
I have an air conditioning contractor's license.
Okay, so you've dealt with TDLR for a while?
Yes, sir.
As far as initially obtaining that license or renewals and that type of thing, right? How long did that process take? How long did it take you? How long did it take you?
To obtain the first exam?
Mm-hmm.
You had to wait because at the time that I took it, which was back in 1994, it was only given on quarterly basis.
Okay.
So I waited.
Three months.
Actually, I waited longer than that because the quarter, the closest quarter was full.
Right.
So I waited six months.
Any problems with renewals or things like that?
No.
Happens pretty quickly?
No problem. The only problem I've had is when I've called for assistance.
Okay. All right. Thank you for, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all to this panel. We appreciate it. Thank you for joining us today. Chair calls off the on-deck circle or the on-deck row, Mr. LeBroski, my constituent, Mr. Curry, Mr. Emkin, and Mr. Venable. The four of y'all will join us, and then for the on-deck circle, Mr. Robert Thornton, Asa Womack, Kenneth Borsky, and Roger Wakefield. If the four of y'all would come forward on the, on the front row to be on the on-deck, on-deck batter box or on-deck circle. And, Mr. LeBroski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Jeff LeBroski, and I'm here today to oppose the movement from the Texas Plumbing Board into the TDLR. As president of the South Texas Building and Construction Trades Council out of Corpus Christi, cover 15 counties just in South Texas. From the industry standpoint, on the merger would create a bureaucratic nightmare, we feel. Over, over the years, the State Plumbing Board has dumbed down on areas in the licensing law to keep up with demand in the industry. I agree with all licenses as you grow and you learn the trade. I don't believe that we should take a chance to harm the public as a licensed plumber protects the health of the nation. Corpus Christi has had many problems over the years with public water systems. First problem in 2015 with E coli contamination was at high level, September of 15. Low chlorine levels were at low, and city was under a water boil advisory. May 16th, May 2016, the city went on to the third boil advisory for the third time in a year. Then in December of 2016, the worst was yet to come. The calls started coming in about the dirty and smelly water at Ergon Ashhole, which contaminated the city's potable water system. This problem started December 7th and was not completed until December 18th. No potable water for 11 days that wasn't even under boil advisory. That's right, no water, no shower, no laundry, no cooking. Please leave the State Plumbing Board as this, as it is, do not merge it into the TDLR. We must follow regulations and keep the plumbing standards high to protect the health of the nation. As I sit here today, and I've heard all kinds of testimony, and I've heard many, many conversations, one of the issues, how can we, how can we help it? Spend some money on it. They put 2.2, 2.3 million into the general fund. Why don't you take some of that money out of there and keep the Texas State Board, plumbing examiners by themselves as their own agency and let them add a few more people? I come from a license of family plumbers. Both my boys are registered apprentices in the state. They will test as they go through, but you have people that are mechanically smart, you have people that are book smart. In plumbing, it takes both. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LeBroski. Thank you. Mr. Curry, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Cliff Curry. I'm a business manager at local union plumbers and pipe fitters in Waco, Texas. I'm also a member of the local workforce solutions board. I'm in your district, District 22, Mrs. Burwell, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, staying members. I'm here today representing my members, about 230 plumbers and pipe fitters and apprentices, and also our member Contractors Association. They couldn't be here today, they're working. A lot of them are overworked right now. We do not believe as a whole, as Contractors Association or as, as a laborer in the trade, that doing away with this Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners will solve the issues discussed here today. There are issues that need to be addressed and fixed. They said that they would save roughly $400,000 by going over to TDLR. Well, that's, I assume that's keeping the same people or same staff doing the same jobs. If you do that, you're still going to have the same problems. The problem is you don't have enough people addressing in the field the instances of, you know, or complaints, so you're still going to have to hire more staff, which is going to cost more money regardless of what regulatory commission it's under. So I think at the end of the day, we had to make our decisions. I hope that the committee makes their decisions based on what's best for the consumers of this state and the health of this state, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Who are, thank you. Mr. Emkin.
Mr. Chairman, committee members, everything you have said earlier today has just thrown this report right out the door. It's been talked about about four or five times on each item except for one thing, sir.
Okay.
We haven't brought up the item about medical gas. Medical gas being in hospitals and medical buildings, and when it's installed in these medical buildings like this, the licensed plumber with an endorsement on his journeyman or master's license by statute has to do the work. When that examination is given at the State Plumbing Board, it's a hands-on type brazing, and it takes a lot of expertise to do it. Once that medical gas is buried in these walls of this medical system, there's a chrome plate on the wall, and once that chrome plate's installed on there, there's a whole bunch of medical openings there for medical gases. You and I are hooked to the end of that pipe, as simple as I can put it. I've carried a journeyman license in this state for over 50 years. I've had a master's license for over 40 years. I said I wasn't going to say this, but I am going to say it. I worked with the State Plumbing Board for 20 years. I was the chief examiner there for eight. I wrote most of those examinations with my staff, and I must tell you real quick, the hands-on portion of this examination cannot be written in a written examination on how to install, cut, prepare, and install these products. I do not want to see the Plumbing Board moved over to the TDLNR. I know there are a bunch of fine people over there. I met a couple of them out in the hallway earlier today. I don't think we should do that. I think we need to shore up a little bit, and yes, I know we went several times on all of this in several years. You give them another two years, and if they can't do it, I'll be the first one to sit down here with you and say bye-bye to them. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Emkin. Mr. Venable, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the commission. My name is William Venable II. I'm a licensed journeyman plumber with that same medical gas endorsement, and I reside in Pearland, Texas with Invermore County. I'm here today to speak in opposition of Sunset Commission's staff report. Recommendation to merge the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners into the Texas Department License Regulation. I'm representing myself and seven other family members who also reside in Invermore County and who also currently hold either a master or journeyman plumbing license with additional endorsements. We all believe that merging these two entities would not benefit the consumers of this great state. A few reasons being is that the consumer or customer has the right to get to a good-quality plumbing job, which is up to code and installed by licensed plumbers who have a good knowledge of the many different plumbing systems and have, who have had a background check in order to obtain a Texas state journeyman license. Consumers also have the right to have a contract completed in a safe and timely manner at a reasonable price. One thing essential to life is safe and clean drinking water. Licensed plumbers ensure that the water lines are clean, up to code, and that they do not have any cross connections or backflow back siphons issues. All of this knowledge is gained from on-the-job training as an apprentice, the examination process for the journeyman exam, and the continuing education, all of which are daily function of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Contractors also rely on the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners to ensure that the contracts that they are awarded are installed correctly, relying not only on the licensed plumbers and registered apprentices, but the field inspectors as well to ensure that all aspects are up to code. As a once-registered apprentice and now a journeyman plumber, I take pride in the work that I perform as well as the many contracts I have supervised during my career thus far. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners works diligently, day in and day out, to protect the consumers as well as all licensees. They perform random inspections, act on consumer complaints, administer examinations, and ensure that all licensed plumbers or apprentices have good knowledge of all the aspects of plumbing. Everything listed previously and many more are vital to the growth of our industry and is the right of every person in this great state. If merged into the TDLR, the TSBPE would get absorbed into a large entity who already encompasses 39 agencies and over 800,000 licenses. This is not, this is not beneficial to the industry nor to the consumer. This merger would be detrimental to all plumbers and apprentices who currently hold a license or registration. I feel that this will lower the requirements to obtain any license issued by the TSBPE at this time. In closing, I hope this testimony will help you aid in your thought process and keep the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners a standalone entity to further maintain the health and welfare of all citizens of Texas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Venable. Senator Nichols, questions in the panel?
I didn't really have a question to any particular one of the members of the panel, but for the several panels, you know, hearing some of the same theme, and that is always lowering quality standards for licensed plumbers. And I will tell you, I'm not going to speak for everybody up here, but I think I can feel the tone. Everybody up here wants to make sure that we have quality licensed plumbers. The question is, what is the best way to get there? The last time this board, the agency, was taken under Sunset was about 15 years ago, maybe 16, something like that, and the findings at that time are almost the same as we've got right now. They're, they're late, it takes a long time to get a license, some of the stuff is archaic, maybe, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know which one is archaic and which one isn't, but some people have a better way to do processes than others to accomplish the same goal. That was my job when I was in my business, is to get the job done in a quality manner without, with fewer and fewer people. So the not lowering the standards, the need for the quality, I personally don't see how we could ever get there without the hands-on test. I certainly agree with all y'all on that.
Thank you.
But the, we have a need as a state. You've heard several people talking about how fast the state's growing. We've got building industries, we've got needs for own commercial building and stuff, and we need more quality plumbers, very, very simply. How is the best way to get there? I've heard repeatedly, well, if you would just give them a couple of extra people, you know, they could get it done, because according to my math in this report, this past year they had 20,000 phone calls that were not even answered. 20,000. That's y'all calling the agency, not even picking up the phone. I went back, Mr. Chairman, this is in Article 8, on the work groups, finance, I've got eight, so we had them go pull the sheets. So if you go back to like 12, 13 years ago, that agency had 22 FTEs. Two years later, 23. Two years later, 24. Two years later, 26. Two years later, 27. By the time we get to 2015, at 31. When we got into the budget cycle previous, in other words, two years ago when we were here, they had 33, so we've gone from 22 to 33. We had to have cutbacks somewhere. We checked, and I believe our staff even tried to go back and understand, how do we end up cutting to? And the answer was, although they were appropriated to go to 33, they only had 31, and so we just said, hold it at 31. But we've gone from 22 to 31, and we still got a eight, 10-month backlog. That's problematic. Personally, I don't care if it's done at Texas Department of Licensing or with a streamlined plumbing board, but we've got to fix this problem. It's important to you and your industry, and I can assure you, it's important to the health and safety of our state and our economy to make sure that we can supply the industry out there with the talents that y'all bring, and that's what I want to point out. I want to go with those FTE, because I keep hearing, all we're doing is cutting back, and we've been adding. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Nichols. Very, very appropriate information. Senator Buckingham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to dovetail a little bit about the practical exam, can one of y'all, so every plumber at every stage of their training has a significant number of hours that are directly observed by someone at a higher level, correct?
Correct.
So, and I know the reference was made earlier to physicians, which I happen to be a surgeon, so in our training, every step along the way, the people directly observing you doing what you're doing are saying, you have met this competency, now you're ready to do the next thing. So I'm wondering if, wouldn't, would just a little more structure to the direct observation be acceptable as opposed to having somebody come in for a core competency exam that they've already been observed doing that 1,000 times and thousands of hours by other people?
May I try and answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely. Any of you?
I think at the State Plumbing Board, and I don't work there anymore, but at this point, if you took the tradesman examination, practical examination, and written, and you come back later and want to take the journeyman examination, they do not give you the practical examination over again, only the written exam to pass on to that next license.
Yeah, I think my question is more, I'm just, I'm wondering about, from a process standpoint, you know, if, if all these direct observation hours are mandated, why are the core competencies not being met at that instead of at a separate practical exam?
I don't have the answer for that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, if, you know, I think there ought to be, there ought to be some kind of a appeals process, you know, if the person watching you is not checking off that you can do, and I don't know the right terms, but X, Y, and Z, then I think you have, should have another alternative path to be able to show you can, but I don't know if you've been observed for however many hours doing all these different things. I don't know why you have to wait and travel to Austin to prove it again.
When, when I did work at the State Plumbing Board and, and I was in charge of the practical examination in the back, and you had a master plumber sign off on a man with 8,000 hours to take the journeyman exam, the passing rate on the practical examination was low at that time. Now, I also have to say this to you, too. I had people come in there that had taken the examination and failed it three times and came back in my office and wanted to talk about their failures, and we would go over that examination with that individual. He had 8,000 hours of sitting nothing but bathtubs. He'd never, ever set a commode, he'd never, ever dressed out of lavatory, he'd never rubbed in a residential home or a commercial job or topped the job out or done water piping. You can't expect to pass an examination that covers the whole installation of plumbing only doing bathtubs, and that actually happened. I'll give you another example, too, of a failure rate on this. I had a man take the master's examination three times, came back with his wife on the fourth time, and he had failed the exam, and she was excited about all of this, and they come from Amarillo. He came in my office and sat down at the table. We laid out all four examinations, all four times, the grades kept going down, down, down. The first question I asked this gentleman was, what plumbing code book do you own? He said, plumbing code? I don't have one. I turned all four of them over on the back of the application, and it told you where the exam was coming from and practically which page it was on, and he didn't have a code book, and his wife almost beat him half to death to the front door.
With the pipe?
And as we sit here to speak right now, I have at home, I went to the trouble to get the applications, they tell you exactly where the examination's going to come from and what to study. It's sent to you email or it's sent to you snail mail, if you will, and they still have a failure rate. It's, it's not, in my opinion only, it's the person is not preparing themselves for the exam to pass it, or otherwise, it would be 35% of that eight-month backlog gone bye-bye, because they wouldn't be coming back.
Okay.
You can't force them.
It, it's akin to a doctor taking their boards. You know, you're not, they're learning their trade, so-
Yeah, boards are written, so that's a written test.
And it's all part of it, though, but you have to know the trade to be able to pass those boards.
Right, so that's the question.
Or else you don't get to practice on your own.
Right, so is the direct observation significant enough to be sure that you have these core competencies? You know, higher education in general, trade-wise and otherwise going toward core competency. So instead of, say, 150 hours to get this degree, you have to meet these core competencies. It ties in with our veterans as they come back with military service and the skills they have and how that translates into where they have to go to be able to get their next certification. So, so really, what I'm wondering as I look at this process is, it sounds to me, if you have to have a practical exam where people- have to have a practical exam where people prove that they can, you know, do X, Y, and Z.
They know what they're doing.
Right, then I agree with that. We want competent plumbers. But I wonder if it's not more of a fault of the direct observation? I mean, the people that are observing them for all of these hours, they're supposed to be having them do what they're supposed to be doing, there's a failure there if you have, you know. So, I just wonder if we shouldn't strengthen that process and have, anyway, I was just wondering, just asking.
And that's, and that's a good question. I, I don't know that that's, that's not something that should be looked at, because there's so many variables in the trade that have to be, that have to be covered. And you have to know, because I can do a piping system for a particular application, I can do it five different ways, and I'll make code and I'll be right. But I can take that same piping application, change a couple of fittings in there, it's no longer sanitary and it'll make you sick.
Right, and so, if I can walk in and pass your skills test or whatever, without having any of the hours, can I go on and get that certification? Because I already have that skill set, and I've proven it to you. So, then at some point, why do you need the direct hours of supervision if all you're looking at is, can they pass this practical exam? If I can walk in and pass it without two thousand hours of extra work, why do I have to have the two thousand hours of extra work?
May I comment on that, please?
Absolutely, you go ahead.
I had a young man that worked for me before he went to work for the plumbing board, that his father made him work with me during the summer times, and he was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old. He went off to Texas A&amp;M and got an electrical engineering degree. He come to Austin to take the test that you stamped that piece of paper that he's qualified to do this. And I asked him when he came over to see me that day, on his third time on that exam, come take this examination, come take this written examination. And I learned something very strong that day. I did not know this. A written examination with four multiple choice answers is one of the easiest ones that you can take. Number one, there's a stupid answer there. Number two, the oven don't fit. And number two, there's only two left, so you can got a fifty-fifty chance on the thing. And this boy hadn't seen a plumbing code book in eight years. And, and to close, if I may, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Imken.
I just have a comment of my own personally into this thing, if I may. Forty-nine, as you, you talked about veterans, forty-nine years ago today, I stepped off an airplane home from Vietnam. I never dreamed I'd be in a room like this, going through a test like this. But isn't it wonderful that we can have a meeting like this with this type of temperament to it? Isn't that great?
Yeah.
There's no way to go around it. It's just good. And you've impressed me, Mr. Chairman, very much so. You've done a very fine job today on this thing, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Imken. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I, I, let me, I, I've never, I'm still not good at taking a compliment, so I'll just, I'll.
My column is it.
Because, well, take a look at my Twitter page, and you'll understand why. I don't get too many, you know, never mind. We won't go there, but I, I would just simply reiterate what Senator Nichols has said. Look, none of us are interested in not being unsafe. There are two customers here. You, as an industry, being tactically, the tactical customer, being efficiently served to ensure that the regulation of your industry is regularly occurring so that there's no speed bumps, hiccups, you know.
Absolutely.
So, that you can go earn a living in a great hands-on vocation, living the American, you know, just like, you know, I wanted to be a soldier. And I didn't think I'd be sitting in a room like this, you know, but the strategic customer is overall, your customers and our customers, the people of the state of Texas, to ensure their safety, their quality, their reliability. And we've got a great problem, which is, we're growing faster than, than, than the totality of your profession can, can sustain right now. So, what the question before us, like Senator Nichols said, isn't, you know, is, is the plumbing profession going to go away if the plumbing examining board responsibilities go to TDLR? Nobody's talking about these responsibilities going away. It's, are they a better agency served, are they a better agency to serve you than the current structure of the plumbers examining board? And my sense is that I think some of y'all may think that, just from the nature, tone of the testimony, y'all may think that we're just not going to regulate plumbers at all. I, I get that sense from, I don't know if that's, you comment if you wish, I just, so that's the decision before us, is what's the best mechanism to make sure that you are being efficiently served as the tactical customer and the safety of the strategic customer is being served simultaneously? And that's what we're trying, yes, Mr. Curry?
Just a couple of quick things. One, I, I did have, previously had a mechanical contractor's license under TDLR. I think if you talk to enough contractors, you'll find out that they had the same service problems, or similar service problems with TDLR is what we've heard about today with the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Everybody's got room for improvement. The other thing is, there seems to be a lot of, what really does it take to be a plumber? There's a lot of unknown information out there. And I'd like to invite each and every member of the committee to come to our training center. We've got one right here in Austin. If you can't come, go to one in your local area. We've got one in Waco. I'd certainly invite you, too, brother. And I'll leave my cards with the, with the lady over here to the left, and if anybody's interested. And, and you can go to those training centers. We run registered apprenticeship programs, and you can see what the training is and what it takes to be a plumber.
Yeah, I've gotten to see TSTCs plumbing at, you know, the Waco campus.
Ours will put theirs to shame.
Well, yeah.
Visit the process at the State Plumbing Board. Go when they're giving the examinations and observe exactly what happens.
Let me ask this one question, because the, one of the things, when I read the report, the, there struck me as something of a, a convenience factor from the board's perspective of bringing everybody into Austin. And does the hands-on portion, I assume it's, that's what's done here in Austin?
Yes, sir.
So, that is a, for lack of a better term, a necessary evil. Because unless you came up with, you know, a hands-on, I mean, the hands-on's not being done in the field. You don't have somebody coming from a field examiner, going to, to Waco or Lubbock to, to do the hands-on tests there. They're all brought here. So, that it's a necessary evil to have everybody come to Austin for these tests, the hands-on portion at least, for the sake of not having to buy fifteen sets of, of hands-on testing equipment? Is that a fair?
Well, that's the thought.
Because there's other, other state agencies that bring everybody into Austin, and it's solely for their convenience.
Well.
As opposed to the convenience of the, of the citizen.
I know, our training centers around the state, we all have the same capabilities as, as they do here in Austin to, to perform that exam, hands-on and written.
Has the, can, has the state board inquired of using your facilities in any way or to help alleviate the, because frankly, if everybody from Alpine and Odessa are all having to come into Austin for this, that's part of the, the part of the inconvenience factor.
I know there have been some discussions to that effect, but nothing's, I don't know if anything's moving forward on or not yet. We've had some discussions to that effect where, you know, Dallas, Fort Worth, Lubbock, Houston, Corpus, I think Beaumont, all have facilities that, that can, if you make it happen.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Thank y'all for joining us today. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Imken. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Safe travels back to Waco.
Thank you.
Okay, chair calls from the on-deck circle. Mr. Thornton, Mr. Womack, Mr. Borsky, and Mr. Wakefield. And then to the on-deck row, John Mata, Jack Folk, am I saying that correctly, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Ken Bone Jr., come on up, Ken. And then Cody Simpson, the four of y'all, if y'all would take the on-deck row, I would greatly appreciate it. Chair recognizes Mr. Thornton. The floor's yours. You have thirty minutes, sir.
I wish to thank the Sunset Commission for your commitment to make Texas government more efficient, effective, and accountable. And I also wish to thank the staff for their work doing the review of this state agency. My name is Chap Thornton, and I'm a fourth-generation Texan, a second-generation Austinite, and a third-generation plumber. My grandfather Wiley was a plumber before the creation of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners, and my father followed in his footsteps and was a licensed plumber and later a contractor. It took me a little while to figure out what I wanted to do and what my path was. But I started the plumbing trade twenty-five years ago and took my journeyman exam in nineteen ninety-eight and my masters later in two thousand and two. In two thousand and four, I went to work for the city of Austin and took another exam for my third license with the board, that license being a plumbing inspector. I'm currently the business manager for the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union here in Austin, and I'm also the chair of the city's Mechanical and Plumbing Board, as well as the president of the Central Texas Building and Construction Trades Council. If you had told me twenty-six years ago, when I dropped out of college as an agriculture major, that I would spend my time until now as an apprentice plumber, a journeyman plumber, a master plumber, a plumbing trade instructor, a plumbing inspector, and now a leader of a labor organization, I would say that you were crazy. All that being said, I stand before you today as a plumber and one that is passionate to maintain the high standards that our industry requires. And I'm sure y'all seen some passion today. Plumbers are passionate people. I don't have anything written here that hadn't already been said. My, my wishes, my thoughts is to keep the board as an independent agency, to keep the practical portion of the exam, and it may or may not have been mentioned, to fill the three vacancies that are currently on the State Board of Plumbing Examiners and, and give that board a chance to correct the deficiencies noted by the sunset. And Cliff Curry Constol, my, my thunder, being the business manager for the training center here in Austin, I, I invite each and every one of you to come, come see our training facility here in Austin. We've got over three hundred apprentices that come to, that work during the day, they come to school at night, and I'm a product of that program. We've been doing it a long time. It works. It, it keeps people employed and gives them a great living. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Mr. Womack?
My name is Ace Womack. I'm a business owner and responsible master plumber in Plano, Texas. I recently received my RMP endorsement back in May of this year. And I don't have anything written down or anything. I just want to kind of implement on some of the things that the guys have already mentioned. And I know that Senator Buckingham, one of the things that she was talking about was is, why is it so important for you to have those hours as that apprentice? And one of the things that I always teach our guys, we're, you know, as a company, we're trying to bring our guys from apprentices and bring them up properly. There's things that you're not going to see. There's things that, I mean, I've got guys that have never seen somebody solder a brass flange to a, to a lead bin. There's things like that that you're not going to get to do on a practical. There's things like that that you can't read in a book or on a test. Those are physical things that you need to be taught out in the field. That's why, you know, I support, I support the board in that you have to do those four thousand hours to get your tradesman, eight thousand hours to get your journeyman, because I did that. And I did that all within a matter of nine years. Nine years. My wait times were two months. That's what I waited for my test. Yeah, we have a backlog, but that's because we also, we also have an overflow of plumbers that are wanting to get their license. What I don't want to see is, I don't want to see somebody step in and say, okay, we're going to make it easier for you to get your test. We're going to make, well, we'll make it easier for you to get your test, but I don't want somebody out there that hasn't had that experience to go over there taking a test. You can give anybody, anybody a book, and they can read through it and ace a test, but if they don't have that practical examination, how do you know that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing in your house? Or out on a commercial property, or at a hospital? And so, that's all I really have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. I appreciate it. Thank you. And you don't look old enough to have been a plumber for nine years, so. Mr. Borsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. My name is Kenneth Borsky, and I'm here to represent myself. And I'd like to tell the board that myself, like so many of the other people here, come from a very diverse background. We try and get involved in all sections of the industry. And those industry sections, I'm here to tell you, I'd like to report to you for those people who I'm involved with, that we want to keep the Texas State Board independent of any other board. I'm concerned also about the practical portion of the exam. It needs to stay a, a separate exam. It needs to be there for the health and welfare of our people, of our state of Texas. We, we want to make sure that when we do examine these apprentices for higher positions, that they are competent to be out there. I'm also the chief plumbing inspector for the fourth-largest city in the United States. I have firsthand knowledge, or not firsthand knowledge, but I get to see the different types of installations that everyone does. I get to, to look at that. The practical portion is very important. I do appreciate the board looking out for the best interest of the state, of the state of Texas. And I believe that it can be served by keeping this board, keeping this board intact, make the effective changes, but keep the board in attack, intact. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Borsky. Thank you. Mr. Wakefield?
Yes, sir.
Would you, oh, I'm sorry. What I was going to do is have the entirety of the panel testify and then open it up to, yes, ma'am. Mr. Wakefield, you're recognized.
Thank you. Chairman Burwell, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for what y'all do. And I hope I addressed y'all properly. My wife is an etiquette and protocol consultant. If I didn't, I will hear about it. My name is Roger Wakefield, lead AP, the expert plumber. And it sounds funny, but American Standard picked me as the expert plumber two years ago. And I was very prideful in the fact that they picked a plumber from Texas. I have experience in commercial, residential, service, new construction. I was a UA instructor, a continuing education instructor, and I have every master endorsement that Texas has. I have the journeyman license and the journeyman med gas. So, like some of these other people, I'm counted multiple times. I support the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners as a standalone agency. The things that I've heard today, financial impact on Texas starts at the head. Lisa's not the head. She works for the state of Texas, and she's asked for the money to do the job properly. She's asked for the funding and the people to do the job properly. In nineteen ninety-two, there were seventeen million people here. In two thousand and eighteen, there's twenty-eight million people here. And she said, when she started in ninety-two, she's got about the same amount of people. That's hard to do. Is there a formal procedure for the increased funds based on population? We talked about a formal procedure. Do we have that procedure in place that when Texas grows, the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners grows? Practical exams have been really big deal. Y'all want to hear the good thing? I was a cosmetologist and a massage therapist, and I've done those practical exams. They're very easy to do if you study for it. The plumbing exam, you better know what you're doing. Some of the people behind me wearing suits are all about the money. That's what this is. At the end of the day, we're talking about five-point-two million dollars. I was at the TDLR meeting Monday that was canceled. I've been to meetings in Austin that have never been canceled. Talking about plumbing to me is serious. They want to let handymen get in and get a license. To me, the first thing we've got to look at is the safety for the people of the state of Texas. Got a lot more to say, but I'll cut it quick. I sent people down from Washington State because they wanted to go, they wanted to see the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. They came down because they want to rebuild their system like ours. We have the best system in Texas. Does it need work? Yes, it does. My last thing is, Ms. Buckingham, if you'll ask me the same question, I'll answer it the right way. I've got a lead AP. It's the hardest test I've ever taken. It's a certification, a national certification for architects and engineers. I'm not an architect or an engineer. I'm a plumber. But to build buildings green, to build buildings green, that's what it's going to. So, I became that. It's a big deal. I take more pride in my plumbing license than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. Where is Sache? Is that how you say it?
Saxy, Texas.
Saxy, Texas. Where is that?
I am northeast of Dallas, north of Garland. My company, I'm a responsible master plumber and company owner in Richardson.
Okay.
Just out of my vision.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Members, questions of the panel? Okay.
SAC-C.
I think Senator Buckingham, Senator Buckingham's light just came on, I think I've got a pretty good idea what the question's going to be, Mr. Wakefield.
Go ahead.
We're not going to ask this to everybody, and I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out that, you know, because what we've heard is testimony of this person had all these hours, and they only fitted tubs, and so that makes me wonder about the process of the direct observed hours, and then the importance on the exam. So, I'm just trying to figure out the balance of how we make the process as good as possible for the safety.
Here's the problem, there is a lot of plumbers behind me, that doesn't mean there are a lot of good teachers, okay? I've got plumbers that work for me that aren't good at teaching the apprentices they work for. We're understaffed in Texas, and we know that. Texas State Board does need help, but if you put a plumber with me, I'm the kind of plumber, I want to teach him everything, and I want to teach him the right way. When I say I take pride in my work, it's a big deal. There's not a lot of plum, like I said, there's not a lot. I think most of the plumbers in this room are very prideful, and I think that's why we're here. There's a lot of plumbers that are like, look, don't ask me why, just do what I say. You can't take that plumber to train the apprentice and think he's going to walk into people's houses and do the right thing. I was an instructor in the UA, there's some good instructors there, there's some that aren't. I've worked with plumbers, thank God, the first two or three plumbers I worked for, I think they're some of the best in Texas. But I learned to take pride in my work and do things right every day, and all plumbers don't teach that. Some plumbers teach hurry up and make money, that's what it's all about. Hate to tell you, but I'm being honest.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Buckingham. Any other members have questions of the panel, Representative Flynn?
I was just going to make a statement.
Oh, okay.
I was in banking for many years, and the people that had money in my bank were not necessarily the doctors and the lawyers. The trade people did a whole lot better deal, and they were a lot more concerned about doing the right thing, integrity.
And our education was a lot cheaper.
I didn't get either one.
Thank you, Dan, thank you, sir. Thank y'all for joining us today, I appreciate it. Thank you. Chair calls John Motta, Jack Folk, Ken, come on up, Ken Bowen, and then Cody Simpson, and then chair calls to the on-deck circle, Kevin Robinson, Jeremy Pavlich, Jeff Porter, and Daniel Nivares, to the on-deck circle. Okay, I'm missing, Cody, are you coming up? Mr. Simpson? Is Mr. Simpson, okay, then let me pull, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Oh, okay, would you go ahead and step up to the, because Mr. Simpson is not reported, so I'm going to go ahead and move up. Mr. Robinson, if you would, so I've got, on this panel, I've got John Motta, Jack Folk, Ken, and Cody Simpson, I'm sorry, Kevin Robinson, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the next panel, Jeremy Pavlich, Jeff Porter, Daniel Nivares, and then the fourth individual, I'll call up the next one, Brandon Carter, if you would, come join us on the on-deck chair. And with that, Mr. Motta, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Burwell, Vice Chair Patty, thank you for allowing me to address you here today. My name is John Motta from Houston, Texas. I'm a journeyman plumber licensed by the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners, and have worked in the industry for 30 years. I would like to acknowledge the work done on the report, staff, and respect the recommendations, but I strongly oppose those recommendations to move the Texas State Board over to TDLR. The plumbing board is a self-sustaining board, and has been providing education, training, and examinations for plumbers and apprentices to help protect health, safety, and welfare for the citizens of this great state of Texas. I am glad earlier that the panel before me brought up the population increase. We've heard several comments up here about 15 years, but have we taken in consideration, has the commission taken consideration, the amount of growth that we've had in that amount of time, and how many plumbers have we had in that amount of time? I would charge the committee, if you would, go and ask the plumbing board, I guarantee they have those statistics stating how many people have, they have applicants increase due to the number of population increase. I will close by recommending the plumbing board remain as it is, with one exception, provide more resources to help the board, help us do our job. We're a very passionate group, plumbing is not easy. My son just recently started the apprenticeship program, and he's in his first year for the last four months, and I would like him to see him go on to be a second generation of plumbers for my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Motta, thank you. Mr. Folk, you're recognized.
Hi, I'm Jack Folk, I'm an owner of a plumbing company. I was a cop for many years, and my brother-in-law, Asa, said, hey, why don't you come join a plumbing company with me about seven months ago? So, my eyes have been open to a lot of things over the last seven months. I typically run mostly the business side of the company, so there's something that I caught on to real quick, TDLR will save you $500,000. But they'll only save you that $500,000 by getting rid of a practical exam, correct? So, if you add that practical exam back to TDLR and make them actually do the practical exam, which we've all pretty much in agreeance have said it has to happen, you save no money. You end up with the same budget, just a different hat, with a different place, with more other regulations that they have to oversee. I definitely think that you keep it independent, and there are definitely some things that have to be streamlined, I think everybody sees that, so, but everything else, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Folk. Ken, I will publicly admit that I did not have my challenge coin on me this morning.
By the way, I did, my point is easy.
So, when I am back in Waco, I will make it, I know, I'm failing miserably here, I will make it a point to give you a call, and we'll go see Sammy Sitrano, and I'll buy.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Ken, you're recognized.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes I don't speak very loud. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm a longtime plumber, let me tell you, I'm the oldest of five. My daddy was a bricklayer. I went to MCC in Waco, Texas to get a business degree. About halfway through it, working two jobs and trying to go to school, my dad said, I know you think I'm an old bricklayer, but he was an old bricklayer, but he made a lot of money at what he did, and raised five kids. He said, you ever thought about dropping out of school and going to a certified apprenticeship program for a trade? I said, no, tell me more. He said, four or five years worth of apprenticeship schooling, you turn out, you go to work, and you work every day you want to. If you don't want to work, you don't have to. He said, you have a trade. That's what I did. Signed up for a local union, the business agent that's in Waco now was here, but back then, there was a different group, they were all dead, I'm so low, most of them are gone. But the times were different. There were four apprentices that wanted my job. They were lined up, all I had to do was make a mistake, and I couldn't, they'd fire me. You didn't backtalk, you just went to work. You did exactly what they told you. Well, in school, we worked all day, we went to school on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and the only excuse that you could have for missing was death, and it had to be yours. So, that was right. We found out later when I became a member on the contractor side on that same board, it was about money, it was funded by the state, you know? So, anyway, let's move on. I represent the plumbing, heating, cooling contractors of Texas. I'm a past president, and I also represent that organization with the Texas Construction Association at state level, a past chairman with that group myself. We've heard a lot of testimony on certain things, but there's some things that's passionate to me. I carry an unlimited RMP plumbing license, I also got the unlimited air conditioning license certification, too. The dynamics between the two trades are totally different. One of them takes public, other than Legionnaires' disease, which is the only thing I've ever heard that was caused by death by an air conditioning system. So, the testing's separate, they're different. When I took my unlimited air conditioning license test, it was all written, it was all multiple choice questions. If you took 50 questions and answered in past 50 questions in three hours, you've got what they call a C license, which was anything under 25 tons you could install. If you took 100 questions in three hours and passed the test, well, then you became, you had an unlimited license because you answered the right questions to pass it. So, it's very difficult to pass that test. The problem I have with it is, is that there's no technical, as far as I know, training. So, me, as an unlicensed, as an unlimited licensee running an air conditioning business, all I have to do is hire AC technicians and sheet metal people. Now, we're full mechanical contractors, we do pipe welding, chillers, set toys, you just name it. But what scares me more than anything is, if we go back to the plumbing side, now we've got a contractor's license, and his contractor's license didn't have the skills to do the work, even though he passes the test, if you pass the test, it creates a problem. Going back to the AC side of the business, those guys learn on the job from me, they learn how to sit condensers, they learn how to understand superheats, they understand the technical side of the business, they understand how to read a manual J calculations for deals with the foam houses. The environment we live in right now is tough, okay? It's hard. If you misjudge doing the diagnostic calculations on a foam house, and you put too big a unit in there, you'll have a mold problem. That's where...
I just dealt with that, yeah.
So, if you're going to have a wet house, you're going to have a mold problem, it could make you sick. But on the plumbing side, if a guy goes out there and he doesn't understand how, he's got to have so many threads per joint on a piece of 3/4 inch pipe, and he didn't thread it deep enough, and he's hooking up LP gas, and it leaks, and it's under a house, it's a time bomb. We've kind of experienced that in Gainswell, Texas, when we had an explosion there at a hospital, and there were licensed plumbers there, somebody just made a serious mistake, that's all. But if they weren't trained, we'd see more injuries. We, the Texas Plumbing Association does not want to be, they do not want the Plumbing Association to be governed by TDLR. She died from drinking dirty water out of that drinking fountain. The reason was because they didn't have that money share gap that's on the water, I mean, the drinking fountains now that protects that water, that clean water from getting into the sewer. So, Mr. Stewart came up here with Lynn Brown and a group of people, and that's how the licensing law in 1947 started, because that was happening all over the state of Texas. I hate to see us lose that.
Thank you, Ken, I appreciate it, thank you.
So, anyway, that's pretty much my testimony, and we want to stay with it the way it is.
All right. Thank you, sir, thanks, Ken. Mr. Robinson, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Burwell, Vice Chair Patty, and then the members of this commission. I'm here on behalf of the Building Officials Association of Texas, a large body of plumbing inspectors, municipal inspectors, and the municipal side of the plumbing industry. We are in support of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. Some of the oldest Texas state laws regulating the built environment deal with plumbing. In 1897, the Texas Legislature required cities to enact plumbing codes to protect their residents. Later, in the 1930s, 1940s, in an effort to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Texas, the Texas Legislature enacted laws to license and regulate architects, engineers, and plumbers statewide. These specific professions have the greatest impact on public health and safety in the built environment. Two, the architects and engineers are primarily the design phase of the construction, and the third, plumbing, deals with the actual construction practices. So, we ask ourselves why the legislature only selected plumbers as the regulated construction practitioner? Why not also include electricians or general contractors to be licensed and regulated? Primarily, it's because poor plumbing practices can lead to sickness and/or death due to contaminated water supplies for the entire community. Poor construction practices by general contractors or other subcontractors can have devastating effects, but generally, the impact is limited to one building, whereas a simple cross connection between the water supply and the contaminant can poison an entire regional water system, causing widespread sickness. Since 1947, the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners has ensured that the plumbing professionals have adequate education, experience, and practical knowledge of sanitary plumbing practices to prevent catastrophic illness and potential disease or disastrous impact to the state of Texas. For these reasons, the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners should continue to be a single focused agency that continues to provide the protective umbrella sheltering the residents of Texas from potential catastrophic effects and dangers under the regulated construction As an association of municipal building officials, we are individually licensed and regulated by the state agencies that regulate all construction trades. This includes architects, engineers, plumbers, electricians, mechanical contractors, and irrigators. Since our members are not only licensed through these groups, but we are also required to enforce state Texas licensing laws. This gives us a unique perspective in how these agencies work, and where they lack the necessary tools to adequately protect the public. It is in our opinion that these, that those trades that have the focus state agencies, architect, engineers, and plumbers have superior investigative enforcement and customer service practices. This opinion is delivered from the experience of viewing the actual field enforcement work of the TSBPE, TBAE, and TBPE, and the service provider by TDLR. Overall, it is our belief that the board is sunset and incorporated into another, if it is incorporated into another state agency, it will be to the detriment of the health, safety, and welfare of Texans. The Building Officials Association of Texas strongly urges the Sunset Commission to retain the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners as it currently operates to ensure that all Texas remains a safe and health place to live, work, shop, worship, and learn. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us.
Thank you. Members, questions of the panel? Hearing and seeing none? The only question for me, Ken, is when I pay up, so, all right. Thank y'all, we appreciate y'all coming out, thank you, thank you very much. Safe travels, back to Waco, Ken, thank you. Chair calls Jeremy Pavlich, Jeff Porter, Daniel Nivares, and Brandon Carter, and to the on-deck row, chair calls Brian Durham, Rolanda Peña, Thomas Mojesic. Thomas, am I even remotely close?
Yes, Mojesic.
Mojesic?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then Stanley Briers. Stanley, you here? There you are, okay, all right. Mr. Pavlich, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chair, the vice chair, and the commission for giving me the chance to testify today. My name is Jeremy Pavlich, I'm director of marketing and recruiting for Plumbers Local Union 68. I'm also a responsible master plumber in the state of Texas. I've worked in the plumbing field for over 15 years, and I've evolved from an apprentice to a journeyman to a master level in this trade, all because of the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. After reading the Sunset Advisory Commission report, I feel compelled to express my opposition to this merger. Having been a product of the TSBPE, I can personally vouch for the effectiveness and the quality that the board produces. Recently, my home area southeast Texas was flooded during Hurricane Harvey in 2017. The call for skilled craft workers was immense. What I witnessed on a lot of these rebuilds were unlicensed contractors convincing homeowners that they could do the work. They were doing electrical, they were doing plumbing, all without any training or licenses. And what I'd witnessed was water heaters with pressure relief valves being capped off, gas lines being fit together with home clamps, you know, both of these are... You know, both of these are recipes for explosions. Spent a lot of time chasing down these contractors and also educating the consumers, explaining the value and safety of hiring licensed individuals. If these recently built homes are to flood again or be exploded due to improperly installed systems, I don't think any insurance companies are gonna pick up the tab, leaving the homeowner in another, another bad spot. When an individual goes through the process of becoming a licensed plumber, they have a great understanding of why the plumbing systems should be installed to the standards. These are life safety issues that affect us at a municipal, county, and state level. In conclusion, I'd like to suggest that more resources be sent to the, to the board so they could hire more field investigators. Texas is a massive state, and they could benefit by having more people in the field, ensuring plumbing systems are being properly installed to help protect the health of the state. And as a recruiter, I don't think the issue of not having enough skilled plumbers in state of Texas laws on the Texas State Board of Plumbers. But that's more, that's more of an industry issue. And speaking from a high school graduate from this great state of Texas as well, I think the issue's more of, we have our kids thinking about what college they're gonna go to, and nobody, nobody speaks about the pathway into tradesmanship or craftsmanship from a high school level. I spent most of my time in high school thinking, well, what, what am I gonna do when I get to college? Never thought I was gonna be a plumber until I needed to go to work. Thank you for my chance.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlich. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you're recognized.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeff Porter. I'm a master plumber, water supply protection specialist, a MedGas endorsed, responsible master as well, and TCEQ backflow prevention tester. I actually teach at the moment, going into retirement, but I teach now at full-time at Construction Education Foundation in Dallas, and I get apprentices from all over the state coming to our PHCC class. Most of the information has already been given to you, but I would actually like to follow on from what you were just saying. I have a great belief that, that in a lot of cases, that the schools have been doing a very bad job in making or in saying that a trade was a good way to make, to make, earn a living. And this is, it's been interesting over the 20 years or 25... College, where we have, when we bring in, we have a career day, and we get 1,200 students from the DFW airport area that come through our school. And they were, they were there last year doing their exhibition and doing the testing. I mean, it was great, so...
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for joining us today. Safe travels home. Thank you. Chair calls Brian Durham, Rolando Peña, Thomas Mojesic. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Stanley Briers. And then to the on-deck circle, chair calls Stephen Wilcott, Richard Richardson Lord, Trent Mason, and Stephen Cox. And then after the on-deck board members, we still have, we still have six more, so we've got a total of 10 people waiting after the panel before us. So with that, Mr. Durham, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. My name's Brian Durham. I've been apprentice for about a year now, and I look forward to climbing the ladder, getting a license, just like every other plumber that was here this evening. With that being said, I would like to keep it the way it is, just from my point of view. I wanna accomplish what they have accomplished, to better myself. So I mean, so I'd rather keep the board of plumbers here and move on with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Peña, you're recognized.
Hi, my name is Rolando Peña, and I represent Citywide Plumbing out of Houston. I'm an apprentice plumber. My goal is to be a master plumber one day. I've actually been in the plumbing field for almost a year now, and I believe in the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners and what they do as, as far as keeping things in order. I do believe without the Texas Board, the plumbing industry will become diluted. As far as safety and health hazards, if you look at other countries that don't have a system like Texas Board, there's no order. People are getting sick every day, even down because they don't have licensed plumbers or the knowledge to know the difference between a potable water system and a non-potable water system. The Texas Board helps prevent those situations by requiring any person that dealing with anything related to plumbing, require, excuse me, require that that person to, to know the difference and the knowledge as well, and to be licensed. Also, not only would that affect the value of the work that we do in the field, it would also affect the way, as far about getting my masters in the future, it would have to go with the value of, there would be so many handymans, guys that just can get a license in a week, you know? So if I, if I was to, if that was to happen, you know, it would just affect us in the future as far as apprentice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peña. Mr. Mojesic. Mojesic.
Mojesic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of committee. My name is Thomas Mojesic. I'm a responsible master plumber and a business owner. I represent LS Mechanical, a 34-year-old business that's provided new construction plumbing services in excess of 150,000 homes. I started my career staying on, staying on with a summer job that led me into the plumbing industry. I was accepted to college and chose not to go that way. I had some preliminary remarks, but I'm gonna be the unpopular opinion here. I am, want this board sunsetted. I think they are an ineffective business entity. They have put burden on my company. I know that there are a lot of quality craftsmen here, and they want to maybe state that everybody needs to know everything. My dad was United Auto Worker, and he never built a complete automobile. We have millions of them built every year because they're built efficiently. I think there is innovation in this business that needs to be forwarded, and I believe the state board hinders that. 20,000 phone calls, I have a staff that just keeps up with the state board. I have three people that email, call, have to correspond, and don't get any recourse. There is one fact that needs to be stated for all the handyman people and all the bad plumbing that the state board catches. They have to do 11,000-plus compliance checks a year by their own admission. That would be 31 compliance checks per inspector per day. They can't get to a complaint. The gentleman back there that didn't sign up to talk had a business front down the street from him out in Tyler, and it took him over a year to get out there and see that business was actually a storefront. I'm passionate, just like most of this group. I have 375 people that work for me, and I have markets in Dallas, Austin, Houston, San Antonio, and not only getting close, but the unincorporated area of Harris County would be the fifth largest city in the country and the second largest city in Texas, and that's not a licensed plumber required to do any of that plumbing. You can work in one subdivision and have a municipality inspect you, you can work in another one, and nothing happened. We have licensed supervision, there are third-party inspectors out there, there's a lot of education, there's a lot of smart people that are doing a lot of checking on this. The state board does not teach us how to plum. That's our responsibility as owners of companies, and I take that responsibility serious. I'm not gonna send anybody to a job that doesn't require their skill set. I don't have chill boiler people at my place. I do new residential housing, so I have the tub setter, and that's all he needs to do, and he can make a very, very good living with me. So Senator Buckingham, as far as somebody needing to know about what they are capable of doing, that's what we do at our place.
Thank you, Mr. Mojesic. Thank you. Mr. Briers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stanley Briers. I live in Federal Lake Village, Harris County, Texas. We heard one heck of a lot of testimony today, probably not any that goes back as far as mine. I've been licensed by this board for over 55 years, so I have a lot of history with it. I served as its, as a board member from 1982 to 1998, 16 years, about 10 years as its chairman. I served on the, on the Air Condition Advisory Board over TDLR before it was TDLR, when it was Labor and Standards, when this group was gonna shut them down, and they brought in, geez, I forgot the previous administrator, but anyway, brought him over. Governor Bush brought him over from insurance and straightened that place up and started running it. Now, looking at this report, there's not any question, we need a lot of straightening up. But let me just mention one thing. Y'all heard a lot of people today, and what you heard was, is a lot of people have pride of ownership. This is our plumbing board, and we wanna fix it. We understand there's a lot of fixing to be done. We, when, we're in the same building that we've been in now since 1981, and we, and we probably had about 12,000 licensed plumbers at that time, and now we're at seven, eight times that much, and we're still in the same building. Well, you can only run so many people through there, and I understand you got phone calls and all, but not everybody answers your telephone anymore either. And that's something that probably needs, that would need to be addressed, and that can be, and that can be handled. But just to go back and talk a little bit about the plumbing board and the, and the exam that they give and the practical part of it, it's just not that you go in and take a practical part, but every piece that you do over there is evaluated. If you put together two pieces of plastic pipe with solvent cement, that stuff is sawed in half and put in a press and taken a look at, and those coupons are looked at to see if you made a proper joint. Now, what is the reason for that? When it's up in your attic, you'd like to know that in a couple of years, you're not gonna come home to all the insulation on your dining room table. Thank you.
You can close your thought, Mr. Briers.
Well, also for the same thing for the underground plumbing and the medical gas, all that stuff is cut in half, put in a press, they look at the coupons. Your medical gas has to have 100% penetration so bacteria doesn't grow inside that pipe. When they put that mask on you, you would at least like to know that you're getting a pure shot of oxygen or pure shot of air. We also regulate rainwater consumption in your home. I hadn't heard that brought up. And we provide for the treatment of that rainwater. We train our people for the treatment of that rainwater so that you're able to drink it. I spent the night, last night, in a place that has no outside tap to any kind of water other than rainwater, and we have very pure water there, good water. And that's very important for all the rainwater systems that are going in in this state. And these are things that TDLR has not accomplished to do. We have, we've got good administrators there, but not accomplished people to do the things that the State Board of Plumbing Examiners do.
Thank you. Let me, Senator Nichols, you have a question for the panel?
Yeah, I just start over here at Brad, I guess. How did you hear about this? Brian, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
How'd you hear about this meeting today?
Through our company.
Okay.
Yes, sir, through the company as well.
Just involvement in the industry.
Okay.
I've known that we've been going through sunset for several years.
All right, thank you. Members, other questions of, of the panel? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank y'all for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Chair calls... Chair calls, Stephen Wilcox, Richardson Lord, Trent Mason, and Stephen Cox, and then to the on-deck row, Jim Bibb, Robert Duran, Ed Kelly, and Joe Hutchings. And with that, Mr. Wilcox, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. There's really not much left to talk. I think y'all been browbeaten about everything that everybody could say.
That's what you pay us the big bucks for, to be browbeaten.
Yeah, the only thing that I could see that I would want to add in was just kind of elaborate a little bit on a few things. I agree as far as the training. I mean, you start trying to scale back hours that it takes to be able to apply for a license, or if you start trying to scale back how we perform the test or how we take the test, I think you're just asking for trouble where that's concerned, but I do agree that there needs to be more testing stations. I took my first test back in 96, and I was fussing about having to drive from way up in East Texas all the way back down here to Austin to take a test. And I feel sorry for the guys who are up in Amarillo, you know, that are up in Pamp or Dumas for any of those having to drive all the way down here to take a test. That I feel like if they could have set up another testing station there in Amarillo and, you know, accommodated those folks up in there. So that's really, all I wanted to do is kind of elaborate on that. I wouldn't give up the hours. I would make, I would, you know, the hours are basically a base for, to know, because I've got guys, I've been in the field since 96, you know, as a licensed plumber. I've trained guys in my truck. I'm a service plumber. I've always been a service plumber. It's amazing, even after 8,000 hours of these guys running around the truck, they haven't seen everything. And when they, we get them ready to start taking the test, because I feel like that's the company's responsibility, is to make sure the guy's prepared for that test before he goes and waste y'all's time or waste the State Board's time taking the test. They need to be prepared for it. So a lot of times when we're preparing these guys to get ready to take that test, they're not prepared. You start realizing just what they don't know and what you have failed to cover with them in the preparation for that test. So I think a lot of that responsibility falls back on the ownership of the companies and the managers. But anyway, I wanted to make sure, I know I was trying to answer your question over there. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. Lord, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair Patty, and committee members. My name is Richard Lord. I live in Pasadena, Texas. I also served on the plumbing board for 12 years. I really think the training is a key issue on some of the people taking the tests. There is, some of the problems with the backlog is people retesting. So, you know, and some, it's been known that some people go and take the test to see how the test is initially, you know, it's just to go and take it, and then that way they can come back and retest, you know? And that's been an issue for some time. You're starting to see a lot more vocational schools. That's going to be a big difference, you know? I know we work very closely with Commissioner Alvarez. You have to get some kind of construction pathway. The pathways that a lot of the young men and women that are in the workforce now, they don't have the same construction background, you know? People don't work on their houses anymore as, you know, like when you had a bike that broke, you'd go and fix it. Now, you just throw it away and go to Walmart and buy a new one, you know? So there's some things, when you go to a lot of these high schools, there's a lot of kids from whether, for whatever reason, they have not been exposed to any kind of construction. So, you know, we even see people that have a hard time reading the tape measure, you know, and simple things like that. And we see a lot of people that just don't have the skill sets or the soft skill sets to work in any industry, whether it's construction or any, any kind of retail, you know? A lot of people don't know to show up at 7 o'clock promptly, you know? They'll show up when they get getting ready, and, you know, construction is, you have to have bodies on the job to get the job done. But anyway, I know there's some deficiencies in the board, serious deficiencies, and we look forward to working with y'all on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Yes, my name is Trent Mason. I'm the owner and responsible master plumber for Freedom Plumbing. I'll give you a little background on myself. I graduated high school when I was 16 and decided I was not going to college, kind of bounced around a little bit, trying to figure out what I wanted to do with my life. Got into the plumbing field, said this will work for now. I got into it, and I ended up loving it. I opened my own company when I was 24-years-old as a responsible master plumber, after going through all the steps and getting all the hours and all the training and everything. I have, I had a whole written deal here. Most of it's been covered already at this point. I do want to touch on a couple of things. One person has brought, or two people now have brought up about trying to get the teenagers or the high schoolers involved in this trade. I think that's very important. Now, as part of my original statement is maybe coming up with a program that would spark interest with high schoolers to be able to meet the demands of the plumbing field. And I'd like to say I am in support of keeping the State Board of Plumbing Examiners as an independent agency. Part of my prepared statement was talking about, you know, air conditioning and HVAC is more about comfort and electrical. You can, somebody can still get hurt due to a fire or get electrocuted, but nowhere on the scale that can be done if an improper plumbing system is installed. We're talking about the drinking system in the entire, entire community, not to mention natural gas and the inherent dangers that's involved with that. And I think if you go with the, with the TDLR in their streamlined testing and strictly online testing and continuing to add, you're going to lose the quality of plumber that you get in the field. That's why there are people that do fail that test because they are just not qualified. And when you're starting to deal with not only consumables but combustibles, we're the only industry that deals with both of those, and so I think there needs to be taken special emphasis on testing and making sure these people are qualified. If the, if the state is going to license them and send them to someone's house, they need to be qualified to be able to deal with both of those. And then the second, the last thing is that, you know, we had a, we had a large housing drop in 2008. We had a lot of plumbers get out of the field in 2008 and go into the oil field or go into other fields. That housing market has now came back. I think that's why we have such a large influx of people right now trying to test. I know multiple people that are trying to get down and test right now that were previous plumbers that have left their license labs due to the old, to the market falling out. And it hadn't always been like that. I sent the guy down to take his tradesman two years ago. He got in in like two months and got his test done. He's now eligible for his journeyman's, and I've got his paperwork sent to my desk refusing to send it in, waiting on y'all's, waiting on y'all's decision on this matter. So that's not all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Mr. Cox, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Committee. I'm Stephen Cox. I'm past president of Plumbing Heating and Cooling Contractors Association. I reside in Austin, Texas. I'm a fifth-generation Texan, third-generation plumber. We've heard a lot of testimony. I'm not going to be redundant, but I am going to answer Senator Buckingham's question. Right now, there's statutory requirement for supervision, direct supervision. Through board rules, they have changed and helped out the residential guys, so when they're working in that manufacturing environment where they're doing one house after another, repeat in a neighborhood, that they can kind of cover more areas of the housing requirement. So, that being said, when you're, when you're in direct supervision, there needs to be somebody within a certain location or proximity of you, and that's a journeyman plumber, not a master or an RMP. An RMP is over the whole organization, and his representatives, about 70, 400-plus of us, and we're regulated through that RMP. When I started this, I was a master plumber. Journeyman worked up to a master plumber, and those were the only two that you could have, the journeyman and master. Since then, we've worked through industry partners that are sitting mostly behind me, and we created endorsements through the board and through time and through some statutory requirements that ended up with avenues to the licensee being able to have step up so that he could earn that pay and a quicker return to that point. My suggestion and recommendation as a business owner and contractor is we have a problem right now with backlog that was due to a very good economy. And what we have going on here is a need to think outside the box. And right now, we have two license issues, commercial, residential. They're two different animals, and we try to treat them as one. During the residential process, you're able to step up and go through to your license and work through in that residential, i.e. a tradesman to a journeyman, and you get a step up. That being said, when you, when you work through, that beep threw me off, I'm sorry. They, when you work through that process of working through that licenser, you work up to that point, you're able to be qualified for each level. So the commercial side is one side, the residential. As we work with the DOL programs out there, Department of Labor, which the organized labor works with, PHCC works with, I believe that should be an exemption to the practical side to help move through some of those through there and allow them to do that without it. I also think that we're looking for the testing process to be some sort of electronic through multiple facilities, and I think that would be done with a little transition. And we agree with some of the sunset commission. We just think that some of it, it needs to be a little more time spent on it. I'm available for a resource. My organization is available for a resource if we have any other questions, and we thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Members, questions of the panel? I have one. Mr. Lord, you're not the first person, but others have said that there are folks that are take the test to understand the environment they're going to take the test in without an expectation of passing.
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming that, and then we've heard testimony from others that took it a third and a fourth, and finally on a fifth. There's a price that the plumbers that are training and are trained are paying in not being able to get in for the test with people that are, for lack of a better term, reconordering the test, taking up a valuable slot for somebody that, as a former member of the board. I'm seeking your counsel here. Let's assume that the board stays, because I don't know what the sentiment of the committee is.
Yes, sir.
But what would be the mechanism that you would recommend to dissuade or deter the abuse of the numbers of requests for tests to make sure that, that when somebody's saying, "I want to take a test," they're ready to take that test and get into the labor market, not just learn how to take a test?
That, I think you would limit the times that they could retest, and not as much limit. I mean, you, I agree with you, have a priority on first time. Second time, you know, you maybe have two days a week, maybe three days a week for first time, maybe two days a week for a second time. Third time, maybe once a month, I don't, you know? But there is, there should be a priority on the people coming in. But one thing I do want to emphasize, and I don't know how much you know about this aspect of it, they still work. They're still working. They're still in the workforce, and they might not, kind of like the young man before said, he got to step in pay. Now, they're going to be making money. They're going to be doing a task, and they probably can do the task somewhat well, but they haven't passed that test, you know, to make that next step. And the whole process is a ladder, and, you know, some of the, the way the ladder works is how you produce and how you do it as a journeyman. And I, I come from the craft part of it, you know, the construction side of it. I was a worker, had my license for 35 years. The thing is, there needs to be responsibility on the people that are taking the test, like you're saying, and sooner or later, you know, not, we should have to push every responsibility on the contractor. Us as craftsmen should be able to do our job and do it well. You ought to have some pride in it, and, you know, hopefully, that's what we're trying to, the point we're trying to get at.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud with a stream of consciousness with you here, but it's almost, okay, if you take the first test, fail. You know, you can take your second test, and this is probably done by rule, not by statute, but second test you can take in 30, 60 days. If you fail the second time, you can't try to take it again for like six months. I mean, that way, it's, it's like, you know, there's, there's an incentive to the first time you show up. You're incentivized to pass it as opposed to simply abuse the testing process for purposes of reconnaissance.
And it's only the portion that they fail. They don't take the whole test.
Yeah. But that, is that, is the board not doing that now? I mean, is it just whoever answers the phone, if you're lucky enough to get your answer, your call answered, and you, I mean, is it by random sampling? Is it being done that way now? Do you have any idea?
They just reapply for it.
Okay. All right. Vice Chair, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Patty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord, you were on the board when was, you said you served 12 years?
Yes, sir, under Governor Perry.
So what years, what years?
That'd be 2014 is when I got off, and so it's 2004, 2002.
2002?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So around the same time, last time they went through sunset?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you, you were, you came on about that time. Were you on when it went through sunset?
Just right after.
Okay. All right. And you've read, you've read the report this time.
Yeah, most of, yes, sir.
Okay. And obviously, you would have been familiar with what would have come out of that sunset because that's when you came on the board. You served for 12 years, right?
Yes, sir.
Would you agree that a lot of the same things that were identified in that 2002 sunset still exist today in this report?
You know, and the only thing I would want to say is, I wish there was a process to look at things in between, you know, and not come to this life and death situation. You know, I mean, it would have been nice as a board member to know that, hey, y'all still, because all of us get busy. All of us get to looking at things, doing things, and there's always a new crisis come up when you're dealing with the board. And so with that being said, it'd have been nice if there was like a little review some point, you know, like it's a 14-year or 12-year cycle is what it should be. What if there was a point sometime that there was a review and say, "Are you adhering to the recommendations?" Sometimes, for whatever, yeah, you know, and I really hate to come up here and go, "Man, they're going to say you're the cause of the problem." But no.
I wouldn't say that all, but I would say that you, in that capacity, and those that are in that capacity today, it is their responsibility.
No doubt, no doubt.
They are the ones that are accountable as appointees. They're accountable and are supposed to be representing the people of Texas, and you are the management. You're the ones that hired the executive director. You're the one, the buck stops with you.
But you understand, you well know, it's on these boards, it's not our regular job, and it's, you know, you put in time. How much time are you able to put into it? And then some people are able to put a lot of time. Some of us come from other distance, you know? So I'm not trying to, it'd be nice to help some of the board members with some of these tasks, you know? And how do we do that? You know, would I act on some of that stuff? Oh, without a doubt, I have no problem in acting on some of it. The, the whole thing about being eight months behind, that hurts all of us, you know? But some of those things are unacceptable, and I wouldn't have allowed it if I was on the board. I know that.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. But the truth of the matter is it's being allowed right now. And, and we do have, you spoke to process. We do have a process. It's this process right here.
Yes, sir.
That the agency went through in 2002 and was told a lot of the same things and failed to act, and that's a failure of leadership. I mean, just to say that, I'm not calling you out personally. I mean, you're going on, and I mean, you know, for the sins of the past here, but in a lot of ways, we have to. We have to look at this and say, we have an agency that's, that was not responsive to a process that's intended to make them better and to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and the people that are regulated by the industry or by the agency are being served and the people of Texas are being served. That's not being done, not in an efficient, effective way, and that's what we're tasked with fixing up here. And that's why what you're seeing here today and this, this proposal is being proposed. If things were fine, we wouldn't be having this conversation, and all these folks could be back making a living and not have to be down here testifying. But the problem is, this is broken, and it didn't just happen. It happened a long time ago, and it's still not fixed.
I agree with everything you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. But one thing I do want to say is, you know, this is one of the times when sometimes we have to roll up our sleeves and do the task, you know, and sometimes these tasks aren't pretty, you know? And even us as an industry look at this with all seriousness, so I hope you, I can leave with that message.
Sure, sure. And I appreciate that, but, you know, but I would come back at you and say, okay, so what assurances do I have or this, this body have that when we're telling you this time, just like we told you back in 2002, that this is going to happen? Because history tells us it's not going to happen, because it didn't happen, or else it would have happened the last 16 years. And so it's really hard for us to, to be assured that, okay, well, it's like, you know, I got a couple teenage boys, you know, all right, I won't do it again, you know? At some point, you have to address the problem, and 16 years is long enough. So I appreciate your testimony. I appreciate your service.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Representative Flynn, I would just to follow up on Vice Chairman. Serving on a board, you have a fiduciary responsibility, carries with it legal obligations. And if you don't want that responsibility or that legal obligation, you might want to look at something else, because if you're serving on a board, you have a fiduciary responsibility.
Yes, sir.
And that's not what has happened, and that's what we're talking about. That's where the challenge is. And if you're going to be on the board, you're responsible.
Thank you. Members, other questions? All right. Thank you all for joining us today. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you all. Safe travels. Chair calls Jim Bibb, constituent from Waco, who are Robert Duran, Ed Kelly, Joe Hutchins, or Hutchings? I got, okay, I got Jim. Robert, is that you?
Ed Kelly.
Ed Kelly, okay. So I got Ed, I got Jim.
Robert Doran.
Oh, you're Robert Doran, okay, all right. Jim Bibb, going once, going twice. Joe Hutchins, Hutchings, going once, going twice. Ned Munoz, Chair calls Ned Munoz, going once, going twice. Chair calls Jesse Howard. Jesse, please come up, I want to join us. And members, this, let me, this is everybody that we've had. Oh, okay, I was about to say, yeah, we got, this is everybody who I had, but I have one additional card, Scott Norman. Scott, are you with us? Would you come join us, please? And members, this is what I have that for signed up for registered public testimony. If there's anyone else that wishes, as soon as this panel's over with and questions, I'll ask for any final public testimony. But this is all I have at this particular moment. All right. Okay. Mr. Duran, you're recognized.
Thank you. I appreciate you all letting me come here to speak. My name is Robert Doran. I'm a PCPE provider, as well as an instructor for the plumbing trade, and I live in Fort Worth, Texas. I also teach in Kansas as a professional instructor, which I'll be there this weekend, and I guarantee you, they envy our program. Anyway, I know this is a wake-up call for us. I've been looking at this thing over and over again. First of all, as a provider of education, I make a lot less money than I did when I was plumbing, I promise you that. I chose this career of education because I foresaw the need for education and training for the future of the industry. I built a training center out of my own pocket in Fort Worth. I've sacrificed a lot of hours in this industry. I've had a lot of passion to make sure people are properly educated and trained in this industry. My job is to ensure to make sure they understand the laws, the rules, and the codes. In fact, I have every code book ever written since 1948 in my collection. I also represent several attorney firms for, as a professional witness. One thing is, one of my jobs is to make sure that we treat that rainwater that Mr. Breyer was talking about, because we're going to make it potable and drinkable. My job is to teach the biological, as well as the design, the installation, and all that kind of stuff, to make sure these guys are qualified to do their job. My job also is to promote multipurpose residential fire sprinkler systems. I am with the Fire Sprinkler Coalition. My job there is to guarantee that our children are safe in these homes. We have homes that have houses, we have homes that have fires. We need sprinkler systems, and you have been able to fire. It only takes one sprinkler to discharge, that's all that's going to happen. So it's not going to cause any damage, and it'll certainly save lives. So I take education extremely serious. I am a who, a what, a where, and a why person. I hate when somebody says, "Do this," and I say, "Okay." I want to know why. I asked my commanding officer one time that, and that was a mistake I made one time. My job is to make sure these plumbers in the future, through the apprenticeship program, understand these codes to make them professional in this industry. In my opinion, the state board needs to remain a standalone agency. And under 1301.052 of the law, I don't care what city, what county, what your population is, you got to have a licensed plumber. It has to be an RMP. He has to make sure that those plumbers and those apprentices are out there doing their job correctly. The State Board of Plumbing Examiners, of course, we know has been existed since 1947, and that's ensuring the safety and the health. We've already talked about that. It's a small agency. I found that a long time ago. It's easier to maintain a small agency with discipline and quality than it is a larger agency. I know we got a lot of problems out there. The plumber is the first line of defense against disease and disaster, ensuring the plumbing installed is completed according to the adopted codes. I don't know of an effective reasoning for transferring to the TDLR. What to do, what can they do better that we, we don't do? And I understand we got these problems, but it's all about discipline. We got a new group of people here, we got a lot of passionate plumbers. The whole thing is, we want to make sure that we cooperate with you guys to make sure that we are in compliance, so we don't have this problem in the future. I can promise you that. Now, if we do the exams, and we set those up in different areas in Texas, the written portion, and at the beginning, we could start with doing the shop work at Austin in the facility. We could double up and get these exams caught up. In the future, I've already, I've already made notice that I will use my facility if they would like, because I proctored exams for the TCQ under the Septic Systems and things like that, with the TEAC division for several years. And the main thing is, we, we can do this, we just have to have the opportunity, and now we know the wake-up call is there, and I appreciate it. And I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, and may God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. Thank you, and thank you for serving, even though your commanding officer may have made it unpleasant, so.
Well, I was with DCR Command, and Colonel Robert P. Purcell was my boss, was POW for eight years.
Oh, man, wow. Mr. Kelly, you're recognized.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Ed Kelly. I am a licensed responsible master plumber and the president of Kelly Plumbing and Leak Detection. We serve as homeowners of North Texas. I'm here today to express my support for this commission's findings regarding the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners' mission statement and purpose is to help protect the health of the citizens of Texas, which they have failed to do for years. I've been a master plumber going on nine years. Ever since I've been a master plumber, they have failed to do that. The Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners has also failed to protect the licensed plumbers of Texas, and they've evaded their responsibility to do, to do, to protect the health of the public and to protect the, the trade. How, how you might ask, have they, have they evaded their responsibility? They've, they've done so by poorly managing their duties of practical enforcement against the handyman practicing plumbing illegally without a license by enforcing, and by enforcing ambiguous board rules and laws subjectively, and in many cases, on hearsay alone, against licensed plumbers. Now, why have they failed us? I think personally, it's my opinion, that they're lazy. I think that they lack interest in their actual job. I believe that they lack intelligent leadership skills. And I believe that they lack a real concern for the plumbing industry as a whole. So what's the solution? It's time to make a permanent change. Winners get to keep their jobs and losers get fired. I'm sure the people running the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners are good at something, but it's not, it's, but it is clear that they have lost as leaders, lost at doing a good job, and lost at their mission statement. I recommend that this commission abolish the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners and entrust the plumbing trade to the TDLR. I also pray that our Governor Greg Abbott fire Lisa Hill and Stephen Davis, because in the real world, people get fired every day for losing, and these two have a losing record for a very long time. Many will argue that the funding is not there, but this is incorrect. It doesn't cost a lot of money to do random stings to catch unlicensed handymen. Also, there is sufficient evidence that the TDLR will manage licensed plumbers effectively and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Howard, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you for your time, members of the board. Jesse Howard, I've been a master plumber for about 10 years now. I carry a medical gas endorsement as well. And I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to address Sunset Commission. I've read through the commission's report and found several shortcomings and misleading statements in the report. The two that concern me the most are, it totally omits both the plumbing inspector's license. The inspector is supposed, is a knowledgeable neutral third party that expects the, the work we do. And as, as written, the Department of Licensing does not have a electrical inspector. What's to make me think that they would have a plumbing inspector? It also misses the medical gas endorsement. The, and further removes the hands-on test, which is required by the FPF 99, the code that is used to install medical gas systems in the state of Texas. In order to be in compliance with that, we need to take a test, and we need to have 100% top and bottom. We need to have no voids in excess of an allowable percentage. Right now, they say they have 150, or 1,500 people backlog to take the test. They have 16 little houses down there that you have to plum as part of your practical exam. That is where the real shortcoming is, is they can only test 16 people in the morning shift, 16 people in the afternoon shift, a total of 32 a day. And if they round at 100%, it would, it would take 93 days to plum these houses, to, just to deal with the, the current load, not counting any new applicants that come in, or failures. That's, that's simple mathematics. Third-world countries are upgrading their plumbing systems ahead of their medical systems. There's no sense in building a multimillion-dollar hospital if you can't get rid of the wastewater from it. What direction is Texas headed? Are we going to abolish our boards, send it over to the, to the self-described Walmart of licensing regulations? I mean, we're the people that protect health. Do you, you go to Walmart itself for health insurance? And that's, that's the way they describe themselves. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Norman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. My name is Scott. Members of the commission, my name is Scott Norman. I'm the executive director of the Texas Association of Builders. We're the statewide home builder, remodeler, developer, associate, member association, represent about 11,000 member companies, and our members are responsible for about 93 to 95% of all the new single-family housing in the state, as well as a large percentage of the multifamily. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm pinch-hitting for my partner in crime, Ned Munoz, who had to leave to deal with a family matter, so I'm testifying off his notes with no practice, so please forgive me. But this issue today, and, you know, plumbers that are regulated by this board that are up, along with the other craft professionals in our industry, carpenters, electricians, masons, we have a big shortage. Texas is leading the nation in housing starts. We have for the last 10 years, we're going to again this year. And that labor shortage, or that, that market has certainly exacerbated the problem for all licensed trade and unlicensed trade as well. The average age of our, of craft professionals is 58 years old and not getting any younger. The legislature, as well as higher ed, public ed, the trade schools are to be commended. My fellow East Texan that was testifying earlier about what has been done is that it's slowly shifted to try to get the focus on, on some of these kids and young professionals and old professionals, all looking at trades as a, as a career path is to be commended. But on the back end of that effort, the state should not stand in the way of these people finally getting into whatever that occupation is, especially if it's a licensed trade that requires permission from the state to do business. And that is something we've unfortunately seen with the plumbing board. There's been a lot of talk about things that, that they have done wrong, and, and that came out in the Sunset process, not returning calls, workforce shortages that are exacerbated by the practices of the board, a current wait time of five to eight months for exams. You know, even after Hurricane Harvey, I know they attempted to try to, to help and get more people out there, but I don't think, compared to what the TDLR did, who fast-tracked some licensing procedures, automatically extended some license expirations, and issued many out-of-state electrician apprentice licenses, we did not see, from our perspective, the plumbing board doing as much of that. It was talked about a little bit, but having to come to Austin, Texas, in this day and age to take your test is, is beyond me. The expense is not only just the cost of travel, we're the most expensive city in the state, as y'all know, to find lodging and hotel rates, and so having people having to come from El Paso or Amarillo, or where I grew up, in Longview, or anywhere else, it's expensive and it's difficult. And whether the agency stays and is continued, or whether it's moved to TDLR, or something else is thought of, and y'all create a new agency, that has to be addressed. Additionally, I hadn't heard it talked about today, but the tests are not offered in Spanish. They need to be offered in Spanish to capture a large percentage of our population. I know TDLR offers tests for electricians and HVAC and others in Spanish. Y'all do have Spanish? Okay, well, I've been corrected. I don't know if they're, maybe the practical is not, and that's what I've heard, but that needs to be looked at as well. But we have been working closely with the Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors Association of Texas, they were testifying earlier, and support their efforts to create an online testing option. I think that needs to happen. Another alternative would be follow TDLR's model and provide testing locations around the state. I think the time has come that we need to do that. So finally, we have support the Sunset Commission staff, or the staff's recommendation to address these concerns, but whether it gets moved or it doesn't get moved, I urge you, and you had this conversation, Chairman Patty, earlier, I urge you not to wait another 12 years to look at this issue. We need to make sure that the plumbing industry in Texas is functioning well and that these issues are addressed, and they need to be addressed soon. So I would urge that this, this panel and the legislature would take a look at it in another two or four years to see whatever comes out of this legislative session is working or not. Most importantly, there's a lot of things in our industry, in real estate and construction, that are controlled by the market. They are not controlled by government. But those things that are controlled by the government, y'all need to work very hard to make sure the government is not in the way. Licensed plumbers are very important. We believe in stringent licensing requirements for plumbers. The health, safety, it's been talked about by scores of witnesses today and by you on the committee, is very important, and I, I don't think we can stress that enough. But the plumbing board, and so the plumbing board, though, exists to make sure that these folks that are going to get into this business understand and can do the work, but they do not inspect the work. That's for local code inspectors, whether that be third-party code inspectors or city code inspectors, and so I think that's important to remember. The ultimate customer of this board, like any state agency, is the people of Texas. It's not the plumbers. It doesn't exist to protect an occupation. It should not exist to make a ladder or raise the ladder to keep people from entering. It should make sure that the people that are given the stamp of approval by the state are able to do a job and do a good job and protect the public. And so I just urge you to keep all of that in consideration, and I very much appreciate your willingness to listen to everyone today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Thank you. Members, questions of this panel? Senator Buckingham.
Thank you. Just real quick, and I was kind of waiting to hear about this from somebody, I don't think I've heard it before, but they kind of operate under two codes, the international and the uniform plumbing codes. Do you, do any of y'all have any comments about trying to operate under both of those, or does that cause any problems?
They're, they're both sanitary codes. Generally, if it'll pass Uniform Plumbing Code, it'll pass an International Plumbing Code, it's kind of the lesser of the two. The biggest difference is, international lets you do vent work under a slab or below a floodrim of fixture, whereas international, or it's uniform, won't let you do that.
The Uniform Plumbing Code and the International Plumbing Codes were passed by legislation based on lobbying that took place several years ago. You've got two different groups, two different types of opinions out there. But regardless of what code book it is, I can assure you, the intent of those codes are exactly the same.
So do we really need two? Or should we?
I don't want to get into that, because we're talking lobbying now, and I've got some friends back here.
Both of them are known to lobby, and both of them have been able to get into Texas.
And what are the lobby, what are the groups on each side?
Well, you have the Building Officials, which would be the, the ICC, International Code Council, and then you have IATMA, which is the International Association of Plumbing Mechanical Officials. So they're two different separate agencies, I mean, organizations totally, but the intent is the same. And every time I turn around...
And every time I turn around, I remember when the International Plumbing Code was first written, it had a lot of problems, because it was like a baby. Well, now it's grown and now it's matured, and actually, it's looking more like the uniform every time I look at it. I call it the paranoid code, every time there's a lawsuit, code book changes.
The, the Uniform Code looks more at what could go wrong, International looks more at what has gone wrong, is kind of the premise they operate under, but they're both sanitary codes.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Thank you all for joining us today, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming out all the way from Leander.
Long time, hey, MoPAC is rough this topic.
That's right, that's right, that's right, so. That is all of the registered cards I have, members, I do have individuals registered but not testifying, we'll put those in the record. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the Sunset Report for the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners? Hearing and seeing none, public testimony.
Would you take an additional comment?
Please step forward, identify yourself for the record, and make the comments, sir. Well, he had testified earlier, so it, yes, sir.
Russell Wyman, from Dallas, Texas, and I just want to address really a follow-up that had to do with the actions of the current board and the previous board members. And as appalling as their actions may be, would you not agree that your own actions, if they violated the Texas Constitution, would be as appalling or worse? I mean, this, we make mistakes, y'all make mistakes. And I can go back to the last session, you can look at House Bill 3257, and you can't amend legislation on the floor if that amendment doesn't meet the original intent of that legislation. And not only did the author and the sponsor allow it to be amended on the floor, everybody voted for it. So y'all make mistakes as well, you know, and, you know, give us a chance to fix this We, we, we've screwed up, I don't know how, but.
Senator Nichols, you have a question?
Are you asking us to admit we make mistakes?
I'm just saying, we do, and I mean, we.
Of course we don't make mistakes, that's why we're here every two years trying to fix.
Yes, yes.
Representative Flynn, you have a question?
We try to correct it before 16 years, I think.
But this Constitution's been around a lot longer.
One of the, one of the good things about the legislature, we get to waive the Constitution every once in a while.
Not on this one, no, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, the question before us, is there, is there anyone else wishing to testify on the Sunset Report for the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners? All right, hearing and seeing none, public testimony is closed. Members, that concludes our agenda for today, as I mentioned at the start of the hearing, all modifications and new issues for the agencies heard today, as well as tomorrow, will be due December 19th, which is one week from today.